Now.
Good morning. It being it is 10 o'clock, we are going to call the morning work session of the Board of County Commissioners to order. We are going to begin with public works.
Morning.
Good morning.
We have a couple items on the consent agenda and then we also have some other things. So first thing, we have a bid opening today for the parking lot construction. So we'll see what happens. I think it's just challenging that we got pushed back to later in the year of advertising and that makes it tougher and the bids may reflect that. So we'll see what happens. We're hopeful still though. Consent agenda items, we have licensing agreement between the county and Click-It-That Canyon Days LLC, and this is for use of that parking area down by the caboose. And they're asking for a waiver for that. So that's on the agenda. We also have a licensing agreement between the county. Ooh, and see it on here twice.
No, one's for the mill site.
Oh. Okay.
Two different areas.
Okay. So yeah, there's two of them.
So would you open the the gate in there and just let him park on that?
On that asphalt.
Yeah.
And the same place they do the cleanup every year.
Okay.
Item number seven is an extended warranty agreement between the county and Schindler Elevator Corporation, and that's for the maintenance of the elevator in this building. On the construction program.
This guide for work projects complete, moving towards closeout. Roosevelt, no change. Small Works, we're with guardrail, we're waiting for materials. Courtney Road, let's talk about Courtney Road a little bit. They ground up the road like we talked, like we talked last week. And that's contractor driven. He, his sub can only get here at that time. So it's like either do it now or we don't grind up the road for a long period of time. So they ground up the lower end of Courtney. Of course, you know, as soon as you change the surface, whether the surface is good or not, doesn't matter. People do not like it. So the complaints started. Last week, we tried not grading on the weekend. But that didn't, wasn't successful. So we will grade now. Every, they'll grade pretty much every day and then they'll grade on Saturdays. Contractor needs the road to be smooth because they're hauling rock up on top anyway. They're not going to beat the heck out of their trucks and their drivers. So, so if you do hear complaints, I know we got one that came in, said it was extremely dangerous. We've talked to him since then. Wasn't quite as bad. He just was worked up. But the road will be in passable shape. Remember, we've taken an asphalt road, turned it into gravel road. But the asphalt was coming apart. It just wasn't built to withstand that type of truck traffic. By grinding it up though, we will, the idea is to get at least one with asphalt on, and it's scheduled for September. Somebody started a nice rumor, they were trying to help us out, that it wouldn't be paved till November. So that got more people worked up. But it will, the schedule is to pave it in September.
How far is it ground? I mean, is it all the way down to?
All the way down.
Oh, so the, all the county road?
Yes. There's one section in the middle that is not ground.
How come?
Because that one isn't scheduled to be ground up. That was, that was built, I want to say about 2006. And it has a very good base under it. There was no need to grind it up.
Okay.
So we didn't want to spend the extra money doing it. So that, that piece, that's the only piece that's still paved. It's between where, I want to say it's maybe a mile. It's between the bottom and right where we started the rebuild section.
And they have one set of photos that kind of shows the completed work, embankments and cuts for the.
And that's at the lower section of it, on the new build on Courtney?
Upper.
Upper.
This is the upper section.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's starting to look like a road. They, they shot it and everything and they're moving right along. They're actually hauling rock in the upper section today.
Oh, wow. So where are they at timeframe wise?
They're pretty close to being back on schedule.
That's good.
That's good. They've, they've been very successful. Annual striping, phase one is complete. Roadway design, Click-It-That Path bid opening, a small works contract is next week. Courthouse Parking Lots, we talked about that opens today. Bridge call, we, actually, we were awarded three of the four projects for 3.275.
Which, which one did we, were we not awarded?
It was the re, the replacement project. We didn't get the replacement project. And we, we were very successful outside of that though. I, I mean, I think they like to kind of spread the, and we are competing to get some awful big replacement projects. I, one in Everett, 15 million, one in King County is 15 million, and then there was another one that took another 15 million. So they, just those three bridge projects alone wiped out most of the bridge project money. And I think they wanted to give a few people something. Rock Creek Bridge is scheduled to be done in 2023, next year.
So on the maintenance side, the guys finished up chip sealing on the west side, and so they'll be brooming now for another week or so to clean that up. They're also now helping haul rock for the Sadas Pass radio site. So we have trucks working today and probably for a few more days to get that all finished up. So they can all start patching next week, I think. So, uh, let's see. That's pretty much it for the maintenance guys. I know they're doing some grading because we'll, we'll get to that on the east end pictures that you have with you. The services building, really not a lot. It's kind of just a trickle of work. They, they finished the sheet rock down in the Mount Adams Room last week, and so they're scheduling the painting. When we get the blind that's not the right size, I, I really can't say. The other bigger thing that happened last week was the HVAC, or not the HVAC, yeah, the HVAC units, the manufacturer actually came out, and so they're working on some kind of a solution to give to the engineer so we can finish that up and fix things. So we're waiting on them. Radio site?
Uh, like we talked in, they're hauling rock. The idea is to finish the road and 95% of the civil work this week. All they'll have left is to backfill around the footings and the walls. We're pouring the footings on Monday, the walls on, I believe, Thursday. And then we'll backfill and set, we'll put some rock in for the pad. And on the 10th is when we have that scheduled. They'll also fill in the ditch. We talked to PUD. And we, they're gonna, as long as we get a dusting of rock over, they'll energize our lines. So we'll have temp, temp power. We set the so that, so our guys won't be using generators up there. They'll at least be able to plug into something. Makes it much easier to work that way. So yeah, then that, then that will, our guys will be out of there by the 10th. I mean, they'll be out by this week. They'll come back the 10th and then from there it'll be just the carpenters building the facility.
All right. July events, the rodeo Bible camp is up at the fairgrounds this week, starting Wednesday. Canyon Days is this weekend, and the fee waivers are on your agenda. And then our other, our other crew are trying to get ready for fair in between all these events. So just a follow-up, we were asked to follow up with the request for four 10s. And then had the discussion when Jake returned. And so one of the, the concerns was how do we cover Kianta? And since we're the system administrator for that, and how we do that. And so we met with the auditor yesterday. And Pam and I had a discussion with them about how do we do that? And so I don't know if you wanted to. Okay. So Pam is always, you know, taking, taking it on anyway. If she's gone, she'll take her laptop and we always provide coverage just like we have when she's here or not here. And so we have Pam and Kathy and they can provide that coverage as well as Lindsay. So whether we're here or not, we will have somebody available to take care of that. And payroll is really the one critical thing that where the real concern was between Brenda and Heather, and we, we recognize that. AP may be an issue, but you know, we can be available, but it's not as critical as payroll is. So, anyway, so I think they were, they were satisfied with how we were gonna take care of that and, and respond to things that come up. So. I don't know if you guys have any other questions or concerns.
If they're okay, then I'm still okay with it. That was, that was the concern that was raised with.
Yeah.
Was the payroll. Yeah, the AP is less, I mean, in the worst case, it doesn't, it, it, it gets delayed till the next week and it doesn't make that this week's AP and it, or next week's. Although vendors might not be super happy about that, but it was more the payroll was the issue.
Yeah, and we talked about how often that actually occurs and it's, it's very rare. So, and then you know, sometimes we, there will be payroll on a Friday where we might have to have somebody.
If the schedule works out that way.
Yeah.
Commissioner Christopher, any questions?
No questions for me.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So the, Dan, I don't know if you have the east side pictures.
I do not.
Okay.
I'm gonna need Dave's glasses to see those.
Okay, so I got a, got a, a call and a visit regarding Alder Creek Road and some of the other primitive roads that are on the east side. So Alder Creek Road, when Jeff and I first got here, had been rebuilt from Bickleton Highway, the county line road all the way down to a natural gas well site that was being developed on a large scale. And so we required that they build it because basically it would have been a primitive road down to their location and we don't, we don't allow that. So the pictures you're looking at are just beyond the 20-foot gravel road that they built. The first one that has been graded this year, still has some, there's some rough spots. So we grade these roads, the primitive roads, once a year on this side because that's typically all they need. And we don't have really much moisture in that part of the county, except for in the spring. So, and they farm right up to the edge of the road, basically. And so the, the concern was that, you know, now they're all farming with semi trucks and they bounce around a little more than some other equipment that they've used in the past. And so in this section, there's probably about a mile that the farmer that uses this area had concern about. And we left some, I don't know if you can see them here really that well, but some more rocks, softball-sized rocks that don't help either. And so we went out and, and cleaned those off yesterday as well. So when they come into harvest.
Is this the north end of Alder Creek Road or?
Um, kind of in the middle. So that if you flip the page, the little skinnier photo shows going down to the canyon toward the creek itself at the bottom, where several of our primitive roads connect. But this section is, I mean, it's, this would be a big project to build this because you have a creek in the bottom. You kind of see the thread of the road that, that hugs the, the hillside. And it's pretty rocky. And like I said, you have the creek down at the bottom. It would be challenging.
Is that where Alder Creek, Stegman and Hale Road?
Yeah, it's just before that. Right at the bottom of this grade is where they all connect. Yeah. So anyway, this one probably, this section probably needs mowing more than grading. This, when we actually have some rock on pit run that we had brought because we had a blowout in this section in the past. And so they've rebuilt some and added rock because, because of the grade, the water works this when we actually do get rain in this area. So. Anyway, so the top though, the first picture that shows the truck and the recently graded area, that one is the concern. So I, I don't know yet if they're, they're concerned about it being built as a 20-foot wide road now or not, but we would direct them to talk to you guys about when we have the six-year hearings about adding anything like that. But we, the other option that we've done on Stegman Road, which is another primitive road, and we've kind of slowly over time, I think it took us about seven years to kind of slowly build and put some pit run on and, and get the road out of the dirt and the water. So, and that one's much better because we have a, there's a cow camp that's down toward the end of it before you drop over the grade. And so we've kind of rebuilt that one. It's still only a single lane, but it's, can be used more earlier in the year. Let's put it that way.
So this is kind of just at the top of the grade then?
Yeah, it's up on the top of the plateau before you drop over. Yeah, you can, if you look on the arrow, you can kind of see where they're farming it. I think it shows where the weed is.
Alder Creek Road is two different roads in the same spot.
Yeah.
At least on the horizon of that.
Okay. So anyway, I'm, we're working on this one with the, the farmer and they may call you, so I wanted to give you a heads up. So you knew what was going on. Let's see. I'll be out of the office next week on vacation, so Jeff will be here. And everybody else, yeah. It'll be nice to get away. I have this grant sheet and I'll bet you Dan doesn't have this either. So I apologize.
Didn't get the pictures, so.
Oh, good. Okay.
She reset.
All right. So on the, this is just since probably the last nine months. This is the dollars that we've received so far. So on the federal project side, we got more SDP dollars for Snowden Road, and that's that planning study of, you know, how, how much it would cost and to put it where it's at or versus somewhere else. So that's that study. And then we received safety, more safety grant dollars. Those are the next three projects, the edge line, slope flattening and curve warning signs. Then we also received more SDP dollars, another 1.5 million. And this is for completing the project. Because we completed the projects on time like we were supposed to, we actually received more dollars. Additional dollars. And we actually got the most in the state because of the form, the way they had the formula set up. So that's, that's pretty good for us. We also kind of mentioned this last, last week and again this week, the projects, the bundled projects. So we received all three sets of those projects, which are kind of heavy maintenance on our bridges throughout the county. And that total of dollars that we did receive is almost 6 million. And then we're also kind of waiting on the state. So the RAP program is our, our next largest grant program through the state and we'll receive the final funding for Sundale and Old Eight. So that's about another 100,000 left in that one. We know we're pretty much at the top on the Sunnyside Road, which is 2.3 million, and then maybe Schrantz Road Bridge on the east side as well. So we're, these are all pending. It depends on how much the legislature gives crab and then how much we would receive. But we're kind of high up there in our ratings on these projects. I think we may do well on harms, but we'll run out of money available that, that we could receive. So we'll see. So we've actually done pretty well for the last nine months on grant dollars. So I just wanted to let you know. Which is helpful. These are all future projects and, you know, a lot of these were not, they're not necessarily part of the six-year. We have to add the RAP projects to be eligible for funding, but so this is in addition to the other projects that we have for the most part.
And you'll see the RAP projects again because there's the board's choice when we submit the final prospectus. That comes in August, so.
Yeah. How old is that, that Schrantz Road Bridge?
How old is it? I, it's, well, it's, depends on which part of the bridge. So there was an original footing. Then they added to it, then they brought concrete tubs from somewhere else. And I have no idea how old all the parts are, but it's old. You know, it's a combination of concrete, reinforced concrete, reinforced masonry, and then the tubs on top. So it's and it's, it gets used as a, it, they would like to use it more as a haul route for all these energy projects that are out that direction. And they, they do use it, even though they're not supposed to. It's been a challenge keeping the the trucks and other traffic off it because I think people's GPX, TPS tells them to go that way.
Is it narrow?
Uh, yeah, it's pretty narrow. It's not really wide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see the corner for the big trucks going around there. It looks like it's a part of the pain to make.
I've never been on it, so one of the rare places.
Did you know they had bridges out there?
No. Yes.
I, I went on a road yesterday that I'd never been on too. And I, if you want to go on a real good one, go on Stegman Road.
I've been on that one.
Have you?
I've been on Stegman back when in the days of the, we were looking at that and then the, what is that, Sand Ridge or Sand is further, when the, when the natural gas exploration was going on.
Yep.
So they were looking at different places out there and we kind of wandered. Ray Thayer and I wandered around.
You gotta ask yourself, are we still on a road?
Are we still on the road? Yeah, so I've been on that one.
Is it, is that the main road coming out of Bickleton?
Yeah, that part's good.
That part's good, but when you get out further, it goes on down over the hill.
Oh, it goes over the hill?
Well.
Yes. It hugs the cliff.
It hugs the cliff.
Oh, it takes a right. Okay.
Yeah, they were telling me, Matt Spalding, I saw him at the store and I was told, told him I'd gone up it. And he's like, oh, he goes, there was a semi that went down it. And I'm like, really?
Word. That would be no.
Yeah.
Wow, that really is a road.
Uh, the last thing on my list is the, the agreement with Barry Dunn, and this is for the new financial system, the client management portion of it. They have agreed to it and so it'll be on your agenda for next Tuesday. That's it for our list, unless you got something.
Nope. Nope. I did receive, again, we had discussed it before. There was a, I guess, an inquiry really was more on Sleepy Hollow Road with the logging activities that were going on there. I had a follow-up email this morning. I actually went and drove it again this morning. It's about what I expected. I mean, it's, it's especially the primitive road section is primitive. It was more of a drainage issue, I would say, was my assessment before. Cause it, it's hard to believe, but there actually is like a, kind of a flat spot up on the top.
Yeah.
Up there. And it's, it was, was wet. I attributed it to the spring. There was those, you know, big mud puddles, which are gone now. But in their wake is like big.
Holes.
Big holes. And so I don't know, it might be something we can look at more as a drainage. I mean, it's a primitive road. People need to understand that. I don't believe anybody lives out there. I think it's, it's in that section. But I think that the, and I'll forward you the email that I got. It has a lot more details as far as the, I, I believe the issue is more on the west end of it, the more improved part of it when there's logging operations that go on through there. And I don't, you know, I think my advice to them is again, advocate because that road's not in, it wouldn't be a huge deal. I mean, we could, it could potentially be put on to the the six-year program as far as eventually maybe doing an upgrade on the west end of it. Cause there is people that live there. Same with the east end. There's people that live there. The stuff in the middle, I, it would be really hard to advocate. Sort of maybe doing a little ditch work to get the water out of the, out of the road. Cause the road is the ditch. And that, that doesn't work really well. And there is no rock. I mean, it's just dirt. But again, nobody lives out there. There's no utilities out there. So that's different. But I will suggest that they maybe advocate if they want to see that put on, you know, eventually we could do an upgrade. I was impressed, our, the Lyle Snowden Road through, I didn't actually come back through that, but I did kind of look down there is in really good shape for, because that used to be, that used to be like if you wanted to, if you took somebody out and you wanted to scare them, you would drive through there at night. And it's now, it would, it wouldn't scare them at all. I would be more scared driving on 82nd Avenue in Portland at night. But yeah, I'll forward you the email. You know, real nice, you know, very informative, you know, this is not somebody that's, you know, screaming and that they're, they're just concerned with all the traffic that's going through there. And it's, it's hard you know, for the road to stand up this time of year.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you can, and maybe give her a call back and just see. And, and again, maybe, and I will do the same is just invite them to advocate for that during the six-year road hearings. Cause that's really the, long-term, that's the only way to fix it is we would have to do some improvements on there. And I could, I could support the west, extreme west and the extreme east, but the middle is no.
Yeah.
There's, I don't know what that would be for. So.
Commissioner Christopher, you had questions?
Uh, I do. Gordy, can you remind me when your, what month we normally do the six-year transportation rates?
Normally, yeah, October, November, but I don't know that we have to wait that long. We'll have it sooner this year than past years. So.
Thank you.
We just have to adopt by the end of the year.
Yes.
Any other questions, Commissioner Christopher?
No, sir.
Okay. I don't have any. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too.
Harmon, do you have?
Harmon was snickering about my.
All right. I'm guessing Sharon is as well.
You've been on Sleepy Hollow, or not Sleepy Hollow.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Spotted some gravel. That's what we typically do, ballast or, you know, pit run on those.
I didn't see anything active right now. I saw something off in the distance, but I didn't, there was no evidence on the road.
If they're damaging the primitive road.
On the east end, you can see that it was logged, like in the last five years in the road. You can see if there's sure it was the logging out.
Right. They put that on, on there.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners.
Oh, don't worry. We'll wait for them.
Good morning. So before we get started this morning, I just want to, we want to welcome Elizabeth, the human resources. She's doing a great job and we're, we're thrilled that she's, she's joined the team. So just wanted to acknowledge it. She is with us now and doing a great job. So this morning, we're gonna start off with fiscal services and I'll just turn it over to Jen, who knows all about all the numbers.
Don't go that far. Um, good morning.
Good morning.
I emailed you guys the links and the update to all the quarterly findings. I, I emailed you guys the, um, links and the update to all the quarterly financials as well as the snapshot of recession indicators that I, I put together. So, um, there are four dashboards for you. Uh, the expense, all funds, the general fund, the revenue and the recession indicator snapshot. We'll start with the all-fund expenditures. Currently, all funds, um, are sitting at thirty-six percent of, um, budget used. That's well below our target of fifty percent, um, sitting in a pretty good spot. Additionally to this, I have added, um, supplemental budget adjustments to this dashboard that wasn't there last time. So we can keep track of what supplemental changes have been happening throughout the year. So you'll see this total, um, in this ma- metric. And then at the bottom on the reports, you will see a whole column here of which fund had supplemental changes as well as a link to the supplemental itself. In case you wanted to dive in there and, um, check out what.
How did that happen?
Remind yourself of where that came from. Um, you can access that. Aside from that, the other change would be that status column. I have color coordinated, um, a status level for each fund. For expense, I used a five percent variance. Um, so if the, if the fund's within five percent of the target, um, it's gonna be a yellow, be mindful status. If it is greater than that on the expense side, it's gonna be green. If it is over the target, it's gonna be red. Um, a red indicator isn't, or red isn't really an indicator of it's off the mark at this point in time. We do have departments or funds that are, have front-loaded expense, um, or a large payout.
We all strive to not be the red dot.
But, you know, it, it happens, happens, you know? Any questions on the all funds?
With the, the five percent, so victim witnesses showing up as red, but it's at fifty-three percent.
Over target. So anything over target, I did a, a red.
Okay.
Status. So five percent below target, I did that mindful status.
It's getting close.
Getting close.
So anything, anything past fifty percent shows up as red. Okay.
General Fund. Exact same layout. Um, General Fund sitting at forty-five percent, so that's within that five percent variance. It's gonna be in a yellow, be mindful status. Total suppl- um, supplementals at a hundred and seventy-one thousand at this point in time. And then with the General Fund, you can, and the all funds, you can click within the report. It'll take you to a more detailed section of the reporting if you were.
I have not done that.
Yes, anything that shows up from the cursor shows up as a hand, you can click into it. So from there, you can even click the hyperlink on that quarter and go drill into the actual nuts and bolts of what the expenses are.
So the supplemental for the General Fund so far is only a hundred and seventy-one thousand. We'd expect that to go up the next one because departments are gonna start trying to cover the four percent increase. So expect that number to grow.
Yes, I will be working on with electeds and directors on those, we can increase supplementals shortly. And then the revenue, this one's new for this quarter. Um, I tried to capture our, our top revenues for all funds. So you have this section right here of all funds, um, property tax, landfill, sales tax, motor vehicle gas tax, REIT, timber harvest tax. Right next to it would be the top revenues for the General Fund. Pretty close to the same except for, you know, motor vehicle tax only goes to the road fund. And, um, you know, the General Fund has, uh, general governmental services in there as well and state entitlements.
One comment I would have, yeah, the land, as far as we're only halfway through the year. So it's like you're, like anytime I see a, you know, a chart that has a.
Yeah.
It's like, oh, yeah, it's because we're only, yeah.
We are only, yeah.
Ignore twenty-two.
Yeah, it's a moving target. A landfill sitting at forty-six percent, target would be fifty, um, pretty close. Sales tax, forty-four percent. Um, we increased the sales tax, uh, rate in quarter two. We were hoping to have brought in a quarter two closer to one point two. We brought in nine thirty-five. So, I mean, it's close. We're two hundred and sixty thousand dollars off for that quarter. You can see how they trend here. Scrolling down, you can dive into these revenues, just like you can on the expenses, all funds and general fund. With, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I did have a question on excise tax. What, any, like the, you know, when I see a hundred and eighty-two percent of normal, so it's like way overperforming.
SDSL in the first quarter.
Okay, that's what I suspected, but that's I wanted to confirm. Okay.
So, um, the statuses here, I used a ten percent variance because the way the revenues flow, they're not, um, they're not as stable as the expenses flow out. You know, billings for grants could come in different quarters or later. And, you know, things like property tax are mostly collected twice a year. So within ten percent of target, then you're gonna be green, um, or then yellow and then red on there. You can dive into the all funds and see, see like general property taxes, you can see which department manages that and what fund those go to and how much was brought in.
This might be the biggest understatement of the day, but this is an amazing amount of information.
Yeah.
Any questions on revenue so far?
Um, we received the federal, indirect federal grant, didn't we? Or the direct federal grant at one, two point one eight seven, did that come through now?
It has not come in yet.
It has not come in yet, okay.
You're talking about ARPA funds?
I'm guessing that's what the two point one eight seven stands for, right?
Some, some of it, yeah, I think.
That's why that number's off.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be any time.
I had to do a submission.
You have to ask for it.
Again.
Again.
Yes, so I did that. Um, I got kicked back, a little, a little bit of a kickback from the, like automated system.
Yeah, it seems like we got that, yeah, we got a copy of that that said something.
So the, the timber harvest taxes that are way down.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the taxes we get for logging, um, D and R ground that goes to us? Or is that timber harvest taxes on private ground that goes to us?
I believe it, it could be both. It's, I think the private timber is, goes in there too. And it, and I know just from past, that seems to track where we get those late in the, like at the last.
Yeah.
Right at the end. Because it's not unusual, like it's not concerning that you're.
You're lagging there.
Yeah, you're lagging. And then at, by the end of the year, it's, everything catches up. And it's, that is one of those circumstances of the, especially on the revenue sides, they're not steady. You know, you're like, well, we're fifty percent through the year, we should be fifty percent through our revenue. And that's not the way it works. You have some sources maybe are front-loaded where you get more in the beginning and then nothing. And then you have other ones that it seems like they come in at the last. I, I don't know if it has to do with the way the sales work and they don't close the stuff out and pay the bills until, you know, the, the fourth quarter or how that all works, but.
Then, that's why it makes as much art as a science training to say, where are we in the budget? Cause you, all these funds and lines and expenses and revenues, front-loaded, back-loaded, you know, and so.
Still amazing.
Yes, it is amazing.
Okay, and the revenue or the recession indicator snapshot, just because we're facing quite interesting economic times right now. I know that this, we're in a different situation than we were in the Great Depression, but I wanted to try and see if we can at least have some data points in comparison. You know, obviously, the Great Recession was, was solely basically in the housing crash and overextending, overborrowing, um, whatnot. We're not really dealing with that right now. But to see what happened in the Great, the Great Recession and compared to our revenues, um, I wanted to put together something for you guys just to keep track of. And when, during the twenty twenty-three budget build, at what point do we need to, you know, make some adjustments? Call people back in, um, and maybe do some reductions on, on the expense side of the budget before we adopt it.
Historically, the Fed will tell you it's a recession when it's actually over.
Yeah. Looking back, we found out.
Looking back, it really was a recession.
Really was bad.
Yeah. But we're out now, we're done now.
So you'll have the GDP growth rate percentages there. Um, the state of Washington, I couldn't find any historical data, um, by quarter for the state of Washington. So the, that's the annual, um, in the, on the historical side of things. I am tracking, you know, I, I broke it down by quarter back in two thousand and seven through two thousand and nine, and then we're in quarter right now. Unemployment rates, um, you know, I'm comparing Clickcat County's not seasonally adjustment rates to Washington and the nation's seasonally adjusted rates. Um, you can kind of get an idea though, taking a look at that where, if it was seasonally adjusted, where we would be at in Clickcat County. We averaged, it looks, it appears that we average at least about two percentage points higher than the state or the nation. But unemployment's still at, um, pretty close to an all-time low. Personal consumer expenditure percentages. So the blue would be the consumer expenditures that the BEA tracks. Uh, the red would be the CPI change from the prior month. And then the orange would be the CPI change over the, the month one year ago. So obviously, as CPI increases, then personal consumer expenditures start to decrease. And that's kind of where we're at right now. They haven't put out June's numbers yet. Once they do, I'll get those in.
Terms of unemployment, um, my association is, um, sent out a thing that, that unemployment claims are starting to rise. So I think it's bottomed out in multiple sectors now, or laying off employees outside of high-tech because of the supply chain issue.
And then this last one would be the county's revenues during the Great Recession. I tried to pull, um, what I thought would be, um, impacted most by the recession. So landfill dollars, um, property tax, investment interest, excise tax, uh, sales tax, harvest tax, and building permits. There are a couple anomalies through here. Um, according to my predecessor's notes back in two thousand and seven, the landfill quarterly payment was made in the wrong year or there was some accounting issue at one of the quarters. But even if you were to average two thousand and eight out with two thousand and seven, it, it would probably have come in right about here.
Right, it was, it was off. It wasn't off at that. Yeah, there was, we only got three quarters of revenue booked into the year, I think it, if I'm remembering correctly. It had to do when we converted from accrual to cash. And so the, the revenue got, so it's somewhere there, you know, at the end, on the last day of the county.
Right.
There will be, still one more payment will get booked.
I think it went, went into two thousand and eight from what I could tell. That would be why it's significantly higher than the other two years. Then, you know, property tax, obviously, it, you know, fell in two thousand and seven, started to climb back out of it, you know, housing market crash. Um, I would. Yes?
Uh, question's actually for Dave. Looking at, um, local retail sales tax from two thousand and six to two thousand and seven, it actually went up. Was there any kind of a, uh, do you remember a county, uh, rate raise in sales tax during that time? Or was that just people spending more at the beginning of the recession?
Go ahead.
You beat me to it. Um, that is a wind farm construction, started in two thousand and seven.
Got it.
I do not have the ability at this time to really dive into and pull out the sales tax of what's what. Um, so I, I wasn't, I'm not able to separate out the wind farm from everything else to see what our sales tax would have done without the wind farm construction in there.
Is there a way to do it where we were, and it was, because we were allocating money into the, because at some point, like they can ask for their sales tax back for eligible projects? And we were setting dollars aside if you backed the, it's not perfect, but it would give you something?
I looked and I couldn't get definitive enough to, because we also changed funds and after that as well. Um, and the reason I can't is because I, at this point in time, I'm still struggling with Department of Revenue to get access into that.
I'm working with them, yeah.
It's been an ongoing issue with Department of Revenue for whatever reason.
Yeah, they do not want to share that information. They never have one.
Well, it's just a matter of adding her to the, to our list. Greg and I are on the list and we just, they just.
It's a weird loop that I just keep getting stuck in and they tried to do it from their end and it didn't work last year, so.
Well, it is, there's a lot of confidential information, so they're, they take their time, make sure we. Just a little frustrating.
I guess one thing that I was, um, more surprised about was actually building, um, permit fees. And that stayed pretty standard across all those years, didn't drop out at all. I was surprised by that. Any other questions regarding this?
Although, one of the things that, if you maybe looked at the details, is when the housing market, the building permit fees, but the wind farms were being permitted and they were paying building.
That could have been, yep, that could have been.
And so it was sort of filling the gap.
Oh.
And we, we were kind of, I mean, we were always just the Goldilocks where we, you know, it was bad, but our revenues didn't tank as bad because we had these other kind of one-shot deals that happened to hit right at the same time. And that's if, and I suspect if we look, that's what kept the building permit fees up.
Oh, you're probably right.
Were those, it wasn't, people weren't building houses, they were building wind farms. And then when the wind farm stopped, the regular housing market took back off again. And so it just filled that in.
Um. Any other questions related to that snapshot?
That's one of those benefits of the renewable energy projects.
It is, yes. Uh, the Bureau of Labor Statistics reported June CPI at, um, all items increased at nine point one percent over the year. Um, that's the largest twelve-month increase since November of eighty-one. So that's kind of what we're facing right now.
Casey was looking at Seattle, which we use for our union contracts, ten point one. August CPI.
Ouch. On the plus side, fuel is starting to go down a little bit. Where's that?
A little bit.
Mitch. So, um, Fiscal Services is on your workshop for this Thursday. My goal is to be able to walk away from that workshop and with a clear understanding of the board's, um, goals and objective, objectives for the new budget build, as well as what indicators or thresholds, we as a county are gonna use to alert us to start making adjustments during that build process. At this point in time, um, September is booked up, the first three weeks in September is already booked up for workshops. But October is completely open, so if we need to call offices and departments back in to make adjustments, we have the ability to do so. We can always reduce expenditures after the preliminary budget is posted. We just can't increase. And if we're making adjustments, increase is gonna be out of the question at that point. I gave you some thought-provoking examples of, um, what to come to the workshop with. If you guys could do that, at least we can put together a comprehensive budget plan. That's all I have.
Any questions, Commissioner Christopher?
Um, no, I would just say to have Jen pull that mic a little closer for the next speaker, so us internet people can hear better.
Thank you.
But other than that, thank you, Jen. Very detailed, good job.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
I'll have Casey join me for the HR portion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Want to start on your stuff?
No, go ahead with the.
Okay. So, um, not yet. There's a few things as far as verbals to post and advertise for. Sharon is joining us from Senior Services. She is looking at trying to get a little more creative to keep some of her positions filled and combining, um, a casual .5 FTE cook position with a casual van driver position, and that would allow the two positions to give a full-time status and provide 40 hours of work per week, and also allow benefits and accruals for whoever can fill those two positions. So it would be a change in the org chart of getting a little creative of, you know, combining the two and doing a little job share. She currently doesn't have a benefited position to do this, so it would be, it would be changing that. She does have the budget to do it, and I don't know if you want to come join us.
So I'm looking at just for, and it would actually be a 35-hour, which is typically our drivers and nutrition staff are based on a 35-hour week, but it does, in terms of the benefits that would be added in, the annual cost would be 12,652.56. I would be able to divide those, which we do with a number of our positions. We allocate those expenses to different grants. So we would be dividing this between nutrition and transportation grants to bill those grants appropriately. But I was referencing below that not, if I have to go and recruit and fill the position, which we had a lot of trouble before, uh, filling the part-time position, I'd be spending close to $1,000 a month just covering the duties, the expenses with my nutrition coordinator, not including any overtime or, uh, expense in that, just the mileage for them to go between to continue to provide those services that were contracted to provide. So the last time, I think when we were actually recruiting for the position, it took over a year to fill. We got somebody in and they didn't work out, uh, and we were right back to it. So this wouldn't even include advertising expenses, additional staff time and that for training and all that, too. So to me, it's more cost-effective when we know we have a qualified person to be able to hang on to them, and it's also, if that person doesn't, it's also an easier process for recruiting and filling that position.
How many people are going to be a good cook and a good van driver, though, at the same time?
I, I mean, that is.
We have one, at least.
You know, actually, you know, in my department, I actually have had, I have a lot of people that have been cross-trained to and have done really well, have actually, uh, moved into positions that we've had open to fill, and I guess on the flip side of that, too, I feel like you're a known commodity to preserve some of that and knowing some of the people that you have, it's worth that. I know that we're not supposed to look at creating positions for the person, but I feel like we would have that challenge. We've had just a tremendous difficulty doing a 20-hour-a-week nutrition coordinator position, because they also, a cook position, because they fill in when our nutrition coordinator cook is off to be able to cook up in Goldendale, too. So I mean, it's, it is a challenge, and we've looked at a number of different ways to try and fill that, but I don't think it's that far of a stretch to say how good of a, you know, because it's not like we're talking about CDL drivers. We're talking about doing more of our van drivers and non-CDL-related positions, so it's.
To follow up with Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah.
I mean, that is an unusual, not necessarily in this setting, but, you know, organization-wide, we don't generally put, those are two divergent sort of job descriptions that you would put together. But I'm actually, I'm going to support this. I think, I think it's a, I think from the economics of it, too, it makes sense. And I think we need to get creative as far as to retain people, but it is an unusual. I, I don't want to see this as a precedent with, you know, other positions where it's like we're an accounting slash, you know, maintenance tech. It's probably not going to put those together.
Our concern in HR as well is to be as creative as we can with the departments and the offices, but at some point, it just becomes chaos in general, not in this case.
But I know, yeah, because we talked about this about a month ago, had mentioned, and that was a concern about setting precedent. But I do know the county is getting creative. There are other positions where there's, people are working in two different departments as, and it's, you know, and historically, it has been an issue where it's been where we have in the past had somebody that was into, you know, but they were too casual and they didn't have any benefits, and it's, you know, you kind of look at fairness for some of those folks that are definitely.
Working in multiple departments, it's usually the same job.
It's usually the same job. It's just there is this office or that office.
I see here, oh, your medical's at 800, and so you're assuming that they have no dependents or anything else?
Correct. That would be different if it was, but if they had dependents, that obviously would be a higher amount.
One thing I can share, a little piece of good news, which I have not had an opportunity yet, which could be relevant as far as on the finance piece of it. I did participate in the, our COG meeting. Uh, we did authorize after a vigorous debate, um, which my point of view prevailed. And so we will be seeing, so the, um, AdSWO will be increasing the allotments in both nutrition and transportation to your, just your standard contract. And so we're taking money out of, because the reserves have been going up. And so the allocations, it's like, why, you know, I have been advocating our, our allocations are, are static or very little increase, and it makes no sense to find other things to spend the money on. Why don't we just raise the allocations for the existing programs, which are already underfunded? And so.
I had a lot of back and forth emails, so I figured there was a lot of discussion.
There was a lot of discussion, so there was quite a heated, um, yeah, but, so it should be, I don't have the form, you know, they'll use their normal formula, so vendors will be getting, and that will be in this budget year. There will be a contract amendment.
Okay.
That will take effect. And so I think it will be significant. But it is, and I wanted to just thank you, because I'm assuming you among your other colleagues, too, because they had asked for information about, you know, what is the funding gap? What is the, because they were looking at the additional resources that have gone in from ARPA dollars and COVID money. That's going to be gone, and so the, the argument was, well, now what do we do? So, um, and this is not, and it's a three-year commitment, so it's not just a single, with the caveat that if things fall apart.
Right.
You can always, but right now, that's the, it's, we're budgeting based on, and all that does is true up where expenditures and revenue, we're just trying to bend the, you know, the, the surplus revenue line to the expense. It's, it's, you should not be adding, because the organization's not that big, and they, we've been adding a million to $2 million a year of surplus into the reserve every year, to the point where we have to raise the ceiling on how much money we can have every three or four months.
Right.
And it's like, you know what? I can think of something that would fix that.
Yeah, I've been begging for that pot for a while, so.
You have. Well, you have succeeded, and surprisingly, there were forces against you, and I don't underst, I mean, it was, made no sense.
Nothing personal.
You.
So, yeah.
I think it was mostly because Click-It-Tag and Skamania are really the only ones that are the, they're the, were the service provider, and so there were folks that were, well, why would we give vendors a raise?
Right.
And it was like, because.
We're actually doing the work.
We're actually doing the work, and guess who makes up the difference?
Yeah. Well, that's good news in terms of the three or two, because that's going to help in terms of the budget planning, and that's going to look a lot better.
I think we should, I think they'll, they'll try to get those amendments out in the next, you know, frankly, month to two months, but it will be informative going forward, because then it'll kind of reset your budget as far as the revenues, because that will have a commitment. It's an amendment for this year, but it will be, it will carry on for the, for the next two years.
Fantastic. That's great.
So that's, that's good news, so.
And these were both in the same pay range, right?
Yeah, no.
They were not in the same pay range.
The, so the estimate was based on the highest rate, so the, the nutrition portion is, the cook wages are higher than the driver.
The what, what is that word?
The cook is grade 35, and the van driver is grade 33.
So how will that work with all of our other van drivers if we have one van driver that's the cook? And part-time van driver getting 35?
She already is paid at two different rates on that, and her time sheet reflects that.
So she will continue to be paid.
She's continued to pay, she'll be paid the cook time, that's, that's why our time sheets are, we have allocations to specific departments and codes. It's always very exciting to do our.
And she, yeah, there's already two profiles set up, so it'll be similar to the other job shares. This one was just unique because other job shares already had a position that was a full-time benefited position, and then they were able to do it, and so this was a little different. And the thought was in the resolution that we would kind of state the uniqueness of this, and that it would be reevaluated maybe on an annual basis to make sure that it's all working and within budget and all that stuff.
That's why we like to discuss them, too, is to make sure we don't do what you were thinking could be happening.
Yes. Yeah, so the hours worked as the van driver will be at the van.
Van driver's wages.
Talking across 27 offices and departments.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, that's what I'm just.
And a harder, a harder explanation in the past was how to explain where interns were getting is more than van drivers, but that was more of a difficult conversation, so.
Totally understand that. Difficult conversation.
But you're past that.
Editorial.
No, I'm not. No. Oh, thank you.
Just couldn't help it.
Has this person already been working, you know, under both for, and doing 40 hours?
Uh, not 40, but probably close to 35, it's range, but they would have to be at the 35 in order to be benefited.
Right.
Yeah. So they're already splitting, they're doing the 20 in.
So in essence, they've been, in essence, being employed by the county in two different part-time positions, and now you want to form it together, but can we do that? I mean, if you work for the same company, I don't care if you're working as a janitor for 30 and eight something else, you, we've got to pay the benefits, right?
Well.
Once you go over that certain number, right? Unless it's a casual.
Yeah, they're both casual positions that are non-benefited positions.
Have to and should are different arguments.
That's what I was questioning, the have to. Do you have to?
They would like to now, so that's why we're bringing this forward for this one.
Okay, and the recommendation from you all is? And Commissioner Christopher, I see your hand is up. Sorry.
Thank you, sir. Uh, question, clarification question for, uh, the audience members who may be listening. You are not asking for any more county funds to do this or pay these benefits, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. I'm in favor.
Okay, well, it sounds like you got a thumbs up from all three of us.
Fabulous. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Look for your contract amendment.
Okay, so we have another verbal request to advertise. So in our Treasurer's Office, the Treasurer Gallagher was able to fill his accountant position, and so that, uh, he promoted from within, so that creates another open position. So he is requesting the verbal to advertise for the Accounting Admin 1, 2, or 3, or Accountant within his department. It's budgeted, and it would be for steps one through three.
Commissioner Christopher?
Yeah. I'm gonna go.
Oh, go. I thought you said no.
No.
The transcript said.
Clarification. Yes, please proceed.
I got two yeses for a go.
While Casey's passing out some information for her next subject, I'm going to jump in and, and let you know that we'll be notifying the offices and the departments that were revising the hiring process. Currently, and for some time now, the county has allowed new employees to start working with the conditional job offer pending, passing a drug screen and background check, depending on the level of background check. We are finding ourselves now where the risk of that is too great. We have people in safety-sensitive positions, and we do occasionally find people that we have to withdraw the conditional request. So at least one department has, um, requested that their new employees not start until we have the results. Probably what has happened over time is departments and offices push pretty hard to get somebody in a seat and get them busy, get them working, and, you know, we can back the process up on our side a certain amount, so, um, but it's, again, the risk is too high to have somebody actively working as an employee, even on a conditional basis, and have them fail one or both of the requirements. And so we're going to change it back to the way it used to be, and do our best on our side to not extend that starting time too much.
Could that be done for all departments or just the departments that need that?
I think, you know, we're, we're finding it more and more in all departments, and at the very least, it's a very uncomfortable conversation to have when somebody's on the job and in, working, and, um, and we assume the liability anyway. So I think this just seems, and at least one office has already been doing that, not starting folks until they've got everything checked, all the boxes, so to speak, so.
What, what's the typical timeline to get the drug screen and the background?
So background check, I don't have the answer for that.
Each department has their own level of background check.
As far as the drug screen, um, if I do one before FedEx goes out that day, I, we can get the results either the next day or the day after.
So it's, we're not talking.
It's a very quick turnaround for results.
Well, then, how long have we had to rescind that conditional offer? Has it been just a couple days on the job? Or has it been, they've been there a month, and then we're like?
Well, you know, depending when the test goes in. I think it was a week, week or two weeks.
I have a question on, because with the DOT drug testing we do, we typically don't do the swaps at the campus.
Right, they go to, they do a DOT with the results. It takes longer for that, and so
sometimes we have them training, because they can't do safety-sensitive work in companies, driving people, until they pass that, but we like started their training with another person, so that wouldn't be permitted.
We'll talk. We'll talk for Sharon. Safety-sensitive DOT is a whole separate policy and, and, um, but the road department is one department that's requested that nobody start until they pass the screens. But we'll work with Sharon to, um, make sure we don't delay people getting started and getting on their job, so. That's why I wanted to bring in here first, and then we'll notify the departments and talk to any department or office that has any concerns and go from there.
Okay.
Casey?
Okay, so, um, I emailed, um, a scanned version of this to you guys as well. The overtime salary, salary threshold is increasing for 2023. You've got the proposed numbers there. Currently, it is at fifty-two thousand, seven hundred, forty-three dollars and it only affects one grade and one step for us. So it currently is only affecting step one on grade sixty-seven. The increase is going to go up to sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars as of January first, twenty twenty-three. If we do not have any increases and our wages stay the same, that is the second attachment that you've got for our pay schedules. So with no wage adjustment for 2023, that will affect grade sixty-seven, steps one through six, grade sixty-eight, steps one through four, and grade sixty-nine, steps one through two. The last attachment shows what grades and steps would be affected if there is a four percent increase in 2023. So there is a, a huge difference between the threshold this year and next year. And it, obviously, it says proposed. So last time when we had this issue, the numbers did change before it was implemented. So this is kind of just a heads up. And as they mentioned earlier, the CPI in June was ten point one. And they said the CPI, the August CPI will be released September thirteenth. So then we can reevaluate.
And realistically, you can't have half of the steps in grade sixty-seven be hourly and the other half be salary. So when it starts to creep into a grade.
I thought that it was, it was all based on the step one. When, when we talked about this a few years ago, it was all based on the step one, the starting grade, the starting range.
Yeah, we would, we would propose that if step one is, then the whole grade is hourly. And I, and the feds are working on it too. Under the Obama administration, it was set so high, basically, we would have only had two or three grades that were, were souring. Everybody else would have been hourly.
Right.
Then the next administration dropped it. This administration's bringing it back. So, you know, salary is the exception, always has been the exception, hourly is the rule. So this would predominantly make most of our salary folks potentially hourly.
Yeah, and with no changes, if you look at the projected twenty, twenty eighteen increases, that would affect up to grade seventy-one or seventy-two. And so then that would leave.
For twenty twenty-eight?
Yeah, so the twenty twenty-eight proposed projected salary threshold would go up to eighty-five thousand dollars. And so.
No change.
And that, yes, that's with no increases, that's with today's wages. So it's got the possibility of affecting half of our exempt grades.
So as it is right now, in twenty twenty-three, when it goes up to sixty-one, how many, how many employees is that?
Seven or eight. Maybe a few more because we have a few employees that are at the same position. So it could be, it could be as much as ten or eleven, depending on, on what positions were filled that would be affected.
Okay.
If there's no wage increase.
And then, you know, if we go up to twenty twenty-eight, you know, of course, we're gonna have wage increase till then, but if we go all the way up there to, you know, say, step seventy-four, how many total employees is that?
A lot. I don't have an exact number, but we, yes. Employees in grade seventy-six, seventy-five, and seventy-four would probably total ten to fifteen.
Yeah.
So then the, the rest of the exempt employees would be affected by it.
There's a hundred, you think exempt?
There's over a hundred exempt, but I mean, you know, right? Hundred and fifty. We'll get your number. We'll get you an exact number. We can look at it. Casey and Randy tracked this a lot three years ago and then.
And then it all changed, right?
It all changed.
Yes, and that's, and I, I mean, it, it says projected. And so there was all of this data that was presented and then it was changed. And there were enough people complaining to the state about it that, that they did change it, so.
I mean, the reality is it doesn't change an employee's pay. It just takes them from salary with certain flexibilities to hourly. And then anytime anybody works over those forty hours becomes very expensive, so.
We could change their pay. Change our costs.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that one?
Thank you.
Any questions about that?
And then you have state travel, you don't have to ask for permission for you to go in.
You, yeah. Or, well, we can just give them a heads up or yes, ask for it.
When is it? December, November?
October.
October. In October, Casey is, uh, we'd like to send Casey to the NeoGov training in, in Nevada. But she's, she's attended before, but with, with the, with the. Think, no, but I meant the coronavirus, COVID, closed it down for a couple of years. And so now it's back in person and we have the funds to do it, but she would need permission from the commissioners to travel out of state for this conference. So I'm not quite sure of the process to get, is that a verbal or?
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
I've got it ready, so I'll submit that next week.
Okay. All right, I think that's where we're at. Okay. I'm gonna jump into risk management and then a couple of other departments. So an update next week, I don't know if Gordy mentioned it, I didn't hear all of his report, the new insurance carrier is having appraisers come on site and they're gonna appraise all of our facilities and buildings at, at their expense, not our expense. So that'll be nice to have all that updated information. As I've reported before, to get a two-year extension from the current carrier to cover the the difference between claims when they occur and claims when they're made is roughly five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're looking into a second option who may be willing to give us a third year. I wouldn't expect it to be any less expensive. But we're filling out the application to get that estimate. The initial premium estimate of the new carrier was roughly seven hundred thousand dollars. I received some information from them that the pool's property rates, and this is probably what applies to our current pool as well, went up ten to fifteen percent, cyber twenty percent in liability, forty percent. So if you were to apply those straight across, which is, I'm not saying they're gonna do, our premium with the new carrier could be around one point one or one point two million. So with the five hundred thousand extended coverage and the higher than we expected estimate, I'm thinking the twenty twenty-three premium will be somewhere between one point four million and one point seven million. Our current premium this year is one point four. So you could, you know, and we have experienced a couple two hundred thousand dollar increases the last couple of years, eighteen, twenty percent increases. So I, I predict we'll probably be in the same ballpark we'd have been had we not moved. But may not realize any savings, but initially, until we get through that two-year period. But still will realize a higher level of service and technology, it'll be worth the change, so.
Everybody else in the pool is still has taken a forty percent increase in liability.
Well, that's the overall cost, their cost, you know, how they spread that out, based on premium is history. I'm sure each of the counties has their claims history and so it might be higher for some and lower, but overall the cost for them to get that insurance, for the pool to get insurance was forty percent up. How they apply that does. You know, we're the, we're the new kid on the block, so I suspect we're not gonna get.
Yep. Commissioner Christopher?
Yeah, I have an insurance pool meeting on Wednesday. I'm hoping they cover what their rate increase is gonna be. And then I can give you that information on Thursday. I do have a question for Rob. With the five hundred dollars for the two-year gap insurance, is that a, uh, we pay the five hundred lump sum in front or is that two hundred fifty thousand a year over two years?
That's a good question, Commissioner. That's a good question.
Because that would affect whether we're over our average or under our average, so.
That's a good question. Yeah, that's a good question. I'll look into that.
That's all. Thank you.
Still, I think, you know, it's good, it's, I, I protect it's gonna be about what it would have been in the current carrier, so I think it's still a good move. But we're gonna have to put a number in the budget here real soon, so. And I know the new carrier's working, working on that, so. So that's it. Okay, IT. So we're scheduling multiple interviews for the IT manager and hopeful to be able to find somebody and, and intend an offer. Shelby and I will be putting the budget together. As you recall from last year, Jeff has a six-year budget that, and, and he gave us some more information before he left, so I anticipate that'll be a pretty straightforward, pretty straightforward process. But Shelby and I will be presenting the budget this year. I did hear the talk about Kianta this morning. And I, I may have missed this, but I think, you know, we should acknowledge that we are expecting an employee, Pam in this case, to take her laptop with her when she's homesick and on vacation. So her covering the four tens for payroll and, and, which is appropriate in AP and other other processes, she's already been doing it because we only have one system administrator due to retirements, which hopefully we can fix as we move forward with a new system. But, but, you know, she is the only system administrator, so she really does this all the time and I, I think she should be acknowledged for making herself available all the time. And others do as well. Casey worked on her vacation on a payroll issue on the HR side, so. Good for Pam for doing that and good for Gordy for, for, you know, working with her to do that. Speaking of Pam and the only system administrator, because she really is the only one that can fix issues with, with Kianta. There's a training in the same state Casey's going to, but a different time, where Public Works does not have the funds to cover the full cost of a Kianta conference. And there's some new products, some new trainings, some new things that are important that, that she attend. And so unless there's any concerns, we're gonna try and find fifteen hundred dollars out of the IT budget to cover part of the cost. And then Public Works will cover the other part of the cost so that she can attend this conference on behalf of the, the county. We think it's important that she be able to do, especially with Jeff leaving, because, you know, between the two of them, they really had a good understanding of the in front of the curtain and behind the curtain when it comes to software like Kianta. And so, so my intent is to work with Shelby and see if we can find the funds and if there's no concerns with the commissioners.
None for me. The concerns I have is that just that we have one system in this, which makes me really, really uncomfortable.
Commissioner Christopher?
I don't know if I would use the word very uncomfortable. I would call it scary. But hopefully, as we get a new system online, that could change and we can get a couple of people trained. So we're not relying on one person. That's just, I don't know, a mistake, but that's all.
And it wasn't too long ago, we had at least three, maybe four, you know, it's just. So, yeah, we, we all share that concern, especially Pam, I suspect.
Yes, yeah.
And then, you know, the last time we talked about putting together an IT, a RFP or an RFQ to parts of the system potentially be outsourced or, or other means of, of trying to accomplish all we need to do in IT. Since then, we did get a, a quote from the Tri-Tech who provides our phone system, that they'll do the maintenance and it's around five thousand dollars for, for the remaining eight months of the contract. That's a really good deal. So I intend to send that. We, we have the funds for that. I do intend to send that to the PA for a review and bring it back to you for hopefully approval. And that'll take phone maintenance off of the IT desk for now. And, and then next year would give us time to look into next year, see if we want to continue. It's a pretty good price for removing what can be a lot of work for the phone system, maintaining the phone system, so. So we have the funds for that and then unless there's any objections, we're not gonna wait for the study to tell us that's a good option. We're gonna move forward with that one, at least for the remainder of the current contract. I think that's it for IT. Any questions?
Commissioner Christopher?
No questions.
All right. Okay.
So I've mentioned a few times in the past that we were, I, I was looking into civil service. So just a reminder, civil service is not part of the HR, it's housed in HR, it has a board that is appointed by the commissioners. It's required by law, the Civil Service Commission is required by law and it's an important, it's an important function. So kind of looking into the, the current Civil Service Secretary, Chief Examiner was a full-time county employee whose position was eliminated last year. She has stayed on doing civil service. She's been doing it for quite a while and the data I'm gonna give you, I think, hasn't changed in at least a decade. So, so this is kind of what we've come up with and, and since the sheriff's office is a recipient of the work and needs the work, I, Carmen wanted to be here. So civil service is required by state law. You, you, the commissioners appoint three members who serve on the commission. They meet quarterly. The commission appoints a Civil Service Secretary, Chief Examiner, geez, I'm losing my voice. The current pay for this person and not an employee and they're not a contractor, it's a ten ninety-nine, it's, uh, it's just been this way for a very long time, is a hundred and fifty dollars a month, flat fee, to cover all the monthly duties and that probably includes the four quarterly meetings and the minutes and all the, all the work that goes along with it. This position is required to attend an annual two-day training. In the past, this person was required to use her vacation to do it. She now has a full-time, another full-time job and would be required to use her own time to attend this on our behalf and received little if any compensation for expenses. Current pay for the exams are a hundred and fifty dollar flat fee. Each exam takes twenty hours to set up and do. Exams are on the evenings and weekends, I believe.
Right.
Last year, she did ten exams. This year, we've done ten already. And with turnover in the sheriff's office, we want to explain what the tests are for and what it provides.
Right, so in each division of the sheriff's office, whether it be the civil division, the road deputies or the corrections division, we each have a separate kind of test. There's also a lateral and entry level. And I've been attending the civil service meetings now for the last three years and we're getting a number of applicants in and each applicant has to be processed. So she might get twenty applicants in, so she processes twenty applicants, comes the day of our test, we get two to three that test. We have to have a list of five, so then we request an additional test, which is why we're seeing the increased number of tests. We have had quite a turnover rate lately in the sheriff's office and so that makes us ask for more tests. It's important that we do entry level and lateral because we, it's more beneficial to hire somebody laterally for the most part unless we feel that entry level person might be a better fit for the department. We can't control the number of applicants versus who shows up. We can't go drag them by the ear and, and bring them in that way. Another component of her, of that position is every time we hire or make a change in with a with the new hire, we send a letter out. So those letters are then processed through her and go out through the Civil Service Commission and then I don't know where they go from there. So each person, it's not uncommon for me to sometimes probably to do fifty letters a year. So she has to process all of those and that's just my department. There's all the other divisions in there as well. So she provides a lot of work for Cheerios.
There's also a large component of the Civil Service Commission is a discipline and discharge and we haven't had any in the past, doesn't mean we won't have any in the future. That's, and I've done those in the past, they're very, very time consuming, but again, we haven't had any. So if you look at what, what the fly rate is for tests, we're basically. So if you look at what the fly rate is for tests, we're basically compensating this person seven dollars and fifty cents an hour. Current minimum wage is fourteen forty-nine. Again, she's not an employee, so I'm not making that case. And our lowest starting wage at grade thirty-two is fifteen twenty-four. So I think we need to make some changes and I will propose those in next year's budget. I would also propose some changes in a supplemental this year for any tests remaining, but. What I'm suggesting and not asking for verbal, because I'm still doing a little more research, is that we need to raise the comp, should raise the compensation for testing to at least three hundred dollars to at least reflect the minimum wage or our lowest actual wage in the county. And to raise the monthly admin from a hundred and fifty to three hundred and to cover the cost of this required training. It's been. On web-based the last two years because of COVID, but it's going to go back to in-person. And so we should at least cover the cost of that training for that person like we do for, for other folks. You know, Casey and I are still kicking it around to make this a casual position, then you run into DRS and you run into all kinds of other issues. I polled eleven counties. We use as comparators. They all do it differently. They, it's all over the place how they do it and how they pay for it.
This person wants to continue on.
She's willing to continue on and we hope she continues on.
Right.
We need her experience and her expertise in this. And she's not asking for this. It was conversations and we work closely with civil service that it just came to light, as I've mentioned in the past that. And again, it's not that like previous commissioners have said, no, I don't think anybody asked. So I just think now that we know we.
So, so you said that each test is a hundred currently on top of the hundred and fifty?
Yeah, I mean, I just basically doubled because.
I thought it was one fifty.
Right now, I'm sorry, it's a hundred and fifty-dollar flat fee for every test.
Okay.
She's been doing it long enough now that each test takes about twenty hours. So the simple math was, it's about seven and a half bucks, so, you know, if you even try and get it closer to the minimum wage or our minimum wage, it would basically double that. So I estimated in a budget next year under these numbers, if these numbers hold true, it'd be about a fifty, five hundred dollar increase to that. But they have their own budgets, so, and I haven't run this by the Civil Service Commission and never met with the commissioners and, you know, I told the chief examiner that I was going to bring this information for you. I wanted to talk to you first before approaching the commissioners to see if it's something you're, we can do or should do.
So how long is the actual in-person test?
I've not attended one here.
So for both the road and the corrections division, there is a physical portion. And then if you pass that, then there is a written portion. It takes about six hours of the day, depending on how many applicants there are. So that's, that's, but you're running multiple through at the same time, right? Correct. So, so you're getting, so you can, twenty hours and that's for the gamut. If say you're doing five or six, it's still twenty hours.
Right. Yeah, because you have the applications and she has to process them and then those who show up are tested.
But that's for the gamut of all those applicants, not per applicant.
No, it's.
Correct.
Right. To put on a test for one person or.
Twenty. Or twenty is, and of course, if you have twenty applicants, it could take longer, right? And you also have to look at, I know that they've dropped their budget considerably over the last number of years. The tests for, are purchased. Those tests are not cheap. Some of those tests are, I do believe, I heard her say between three and five hundred dollars to purchase tests. They're expensive. Now, I'm going, I'm currently asking, she's working on getting a corporal test for me. I actually, to save her budget, a couple of years ago when we instituted the corporal position, I actually did a bunch of research myself, found a whole bunch of different corporal sergeant civil service tests and I developed my own and put it forth to the Civil Service Commission and they approved it. So we saved probably, you know, six hundred bucks there doing that, but, right. So. It's, it's expensive. It's not a cheap service to run.
Well, really, all I'm asking for now is. Potential to bring forward in a supplemental budget enough to cover for some estimated additional tests. Sure, not to go back. But so I can't imagine it'd be a lot, but I think the biggest potential increase of the five or six thousand dollars, whatever it winds up being, would be in the budget process and we would bring that forward. Or she would bring that forward during the budget process. So. Any questions about that?
Commissioner Christopher?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a yes. The rate hasn't increased for, you know, a long time. I think this person was a county employee and, and kind of did this as a favor to the county. I think it would cost us way more if this person decided to not do it anymore. And so we need to keep that in our mind and in reality, everybody deserves to be paid a fair wage, so I'm a yes, moving forward.
Okay. Yep, all right. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Carmen. I forgot to thank Casey.
The last but not least is solid waste. Thursday, we were on the schedule to talk one more time about the. Proposed, the scope of work for the contract that was approved last Tuesday. I think it warrants one more discussion if we can narrow actually the scope of what we're asking her to do. I think we potentially could save money and/or get a better product of which. One or both is generally a good thing, so I think it was, it's worth, so I have not sent it to her for signature yet and she knows it. That'll potentially happen after Thursday's discussion. Lynn and I will be presenting the twenty twenty-three budget this year for solid waste. Had a meeting with Jen and the auditor and the treasurer. I'm not speaking for any of the three, but I think we're all on the same page that for the budget bill twenty twenty-three, the litter grant funds will be moved from solid waste and moved to adult probation. The grant expires June thirtieth of next year. I'm almost certain they're going to apply for a new one and so it just makes sense. We didn't want to do it in the middle of a year, but. It's problematic to have one department spending money out of another department and it's. So I think that's cleaner in the long run and the auditor and the treasurer agreed that a new fiscal year was the best time to do that, so. Bringing that to your attention. There will be a request on the next supplemental that Jen's going to be working on. I will be requesting a budget transfer within a department or fund to cover the cost of this project, so we'll move it from unused wages and move down to cover the cost of, of the ultimate cost of this project. And then I'm working with initially Lee and environmental health and public health and ecology on the post-closure of horse thief landfill. I think we've all kind of on the same page now. Joe got involved and brought some historical content to the table and I think. I believe the last email I got was, the college you will get back to us and they are also wanting to finish the process or some things that may need to be done, but we're kind of all on the same page now, I think, about. Working together, move forward and complete that, that process, so.
Get it done.
Get it done. It's been a while. Anyway, so everybody's working together on that and.
Yes, they keep giving.
Hmm?
It keeps giving, it is.
Yeah. So, and I think that's it. I had an executive session planned. I don't need that. I'll be joining PA Canal this afternoon for, for another topic, so that. Short of any questions, that concludes my update today.
Any questions, Commissioner Christopher?
No, sir.
All right. I'd entertain a motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recess for lunch. Be back at one o'clock.
I would second the motion and mention that I will be in the office at one o'clock, so I'll see you at one o'clock.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. We'll see everyone at one o'clock. Good afternoon. We are going to begin the regular business meeting of the Clickitack County Board of County Commissioners. Let the record show, all three commissioners are present. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the business agenda with one add-on under public hearing, public meeting and bid opening. A public meeting to consider the final approval of boundary line adjustment BLA twenty twenty-two dash oh six. Applicant Gabriel and Mitzi Moore and Carl Moore.
There's a motion in a second to approve the business agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept commissioner meeting minutes for July twelfth, twenty twenty-two and July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two as presented.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion in a second to adopt the minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we are going to move into citizen comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. The commissioners will reserve the last five minutes of, so one twenty-five for any responses to any comments or questions. We will begin as always in the room. If anybody has public comment they'd like to give. I am not hearing any. We will reserve them for later. Online, public comment, raise your hand, turn your video on, get our attention somehow. If you'd like to provide public comment. And I will find my. Arm. Don't everybody jump up and down all at once. Okay. You guys must have done such a great job without me last week that everybody said their piece, huh?
Yeah, you're just antagonizing them.
Zero zero eight eight.
Yeah, this is Don Rel with Goldendale. And, you know, the many times that you guys have said that Greg and Sherry are spreading disinformation and distorting the facts. But I've read a lot of the emails, just about every one, and everything they bring up comes from the public records request from different county agencies. So are the commissioners saying that the county agencies are sending false record requests? If so, that should be investigated. If, if not, they should stop accusing them and face the fact that certain taxes and fees in the past and possibly still depend on who you are and what the actual amount should be. And that's my comment, so.
Thank you, Mr. Eldred. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? All right, well, we have lots of documents to go over, so if anybody would like to provide public comment, unmute yourself, raise your hand, turn your video on and we will get to you as soon as possible. You want to sign that? It's in your name. Oh, four nine zero one.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. This is Sherry. I've continued to ask week after week for our commissioners to write solar ordinances for Clickitack, Clickitack County. Last May, twenty twenty, when you rescinded the moratorium, I asked for the findings of fact for how you rescinded that and for why you rescinded that moratorium and denied our county, denied writing ordinances for Clickitack County, solar ordinances. I feel that solar ordinances are very important for Clickitack County as large industrial solar foreign entities are continuing to look at our county to build. And I believe it is your responsibility as commissioners to write those ordinances. During your discussion to rescind the moratorium, prosecuting attorney of Clickitack County said, and it's on record, I need ordinances, I need to have some law to enforce. And still you denied writing our county ordinances, so I am requesting solar ordinances. And as, as you were informed, Yakima County has enacted a moratorium to write solar ordinances. They see the critical need to protect their county and their land. And the citizens provided you with three hundred and fifty-four signatures and over seventy comments and written comments asking for solar ordinances for Clickitack County. You have long silenced this critical piece of renewable energy that can be harmful to land. It is your responsibility to give us ordinances. So I ask again for the public, as other counties have, have done, for you to step up, re, do, put a moratorium in place so you can look into this industrial solar more. So you are making sure when these foreign entities want to place their thousands of acres of black glass and lithium batteries around Goldendale, that you know you're citing them appropriately. Or the county is approving them and I question how the county planner and director is, knows so much about land planning that she thinks it's okay where to cite that. We need to have more professional input. There should be a committee put together. This is critical. This is happening and for you to continue to ignore it is a lack of doing your duties. So I ask again, give Clickitack County solar ordinances and protect the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moskay. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to provide? Come forward, sir.
Five point four yesterday, going to be a hundred and six, hundred and seven, hundred, maybe up to a hundred and ten, eleven by this weekend. In this, in this community, there's only one place that if somebody needs to go where they can cool off, the only place is my father's place. They're a part of the walk gap. They have a place. I was just over to talk to them. They don't get lots of people. They, they got three yesterday. They opened today. I don't know how many they're going to get. While I was here yesterday in this building, I wanted to see if there was anything going on with the county providing some kind of space. And I did talk to Lee and I got a thing from you about the walk gap. I already knew about the walk gap, but that's not to. We got downstairs here, when you walk in this west door, there's that room that nobody's ever in. Once in a while, they have some meeting. That would be an ideal place if people need a place to cool down for the day. They, they don't get to spend all night because no place does that or maybe, maybe a motel or something, but nobody. And, and it should be publicized right now. It should be publicized tomorrow morning on the radio. It should be publicized by either sheriff's vehicle or the county or the Goldendale with a walkie-talkie or a PA system driving through the neighborhoods and tell them what's available. And remind them that you have the transportation, Mount Hood, they'll come and you call, they come. They can bring them here. It would, it would increase your acceptability to lots of people that don't think you do a very good job if you would step up and try to do something for their benefit. Now, maybe nobody will show. I don't know, but if they know that you actually decided to do something to help all the people that really need to help and I don't know how many would come in. But it would give you credibility that you probably don't have in some places. I know that's kind of hard way to say it, but that's the truth. I, I deal, I, I deal with it all the time, knowing the people that I deal with. So I, I don't know, and I hadn't, nobody did anything today that I know of, except Lee told you and you told me. I talked to the sheriff's office. I talked to other people. I talked to senior center. They're going to be open, limited amount. They're going to be open, limited amount, depending on... They won't have the whole place open, but you can get in the sales store and then right off that, there's a door. They can get a half a dozen people could come in there and set. They got chairs and places to read books. They could come in there. But this is not a... If you talk about crisis, this is a crisis to people that are sitting at home right now with no air conditioning, no fans, probably down in the dumps over because they're by themselves. They just need to be reminded that somebody will help them. Even if they don't do it, at least they know that you cared enough to say, "If you want to come in, we can fix this for you or we can try to get it fixed for you." And I would hope that you could say, tell somebody or someone to get information for that purpose. I'm going to see the sheriff here at 1:30 to see about, not 1:30, but about 2:00, to see about if we can get somebody with a system that could drive around neighborhoods outside. They won't drive clear out in the country, but they could drive a big area and let people know what's available and how they could get there because some of them probably don't even understand that. And I don't know how you... Do you think that's a possibility? Do you think that people in this community are in that position? If you don't, you're wrong. I'm 83 years old. I'm not in that position because I'm in a different environment. And I provided myself so I could take care of myself. But there's lots of them here that are single. They have no way to get around. And they live... There's people that live in this house that burned up, almost burnt down to the ground. There's people still living in there. They need help. They need to know that you care. Right now, every time I talk to people, they don't think you care about anybody except yourselves. And I would say, First Souter, for 15 years, you've been here. And we find out now that we don't have an ordinance for some of the lots of things that we never did, right? We should have done that in 15 years. No comments? I'd like, you give me three and a half minutes. I'd like three minutes back, three and a half minutes back from you telling me what you think, what you could do.
Ron, your three minutes was up a bit ago. I've let you continue. And as per our agreement, we will respond at 11:25 so that other people can give their public comments.
I don't want all that garbage. I want to know what you think about what I just said.
Ron, I will answer you at 1:25 when other people have had the opportunity to give their comments to the county.
They'll get them in. I got mine into you. You listen to mine. I want to listen to your answer. I don't want you to say that you're going to say, "I'll do it later after I talk to more people." I want to know what you think, what I just said means.
Ron, and I said I will respond to you at 1:25, like we've agreed upon. If you can sit here and wait for another 10 minutes so that other people can provide public comment.
You can't do it.
That's the respectable thing to do.
Yeah.
That's how we follow the rules.
Are you scared you're going to say something wrong?
No, Ron.
Okay. Well, anyway, I would...
And I know you have a meeting at two with the sheriff, so if you would like to remain until everybody else has had a chance to respond.
I don't even know for sure. They said he'd be back in the office.
Okay.
Okay. And I said I would come back because I want to see if we can get the guy without a truck driving around or somebody putting the word out. Can I... Do they have even any idea if I did, people that listen to it, and we get somebody to get them here? Do you have any idea you're going to put somebody down in his room down here with water? And to be down there is just mainly just to maintain it. Just watch, be around to talk to people. Or do you have any idea you'll do that if it would come together? No.
Ron, I said, one of us, if not all three, will respond.
I've heard that so many times. If I would have done that when I was the mayor of a city, they'd have run me out of town. They didn't run me out of town because I listened to them and I talked to them. I didn't have to put it on my time. When they said something, I dealt with them at that time. And that's why, if the Biden's approval rating is 25, you guys are pretty close.
Thank you for your comment, Ron. We will respond to you at 1:25.
If you ever listen to what, after your show this morning, you probably don't listen to the radio because you don't like to hear the comments on it, but that was interesting show this morning that you guys had, that interview with Julia. Thank you for at least lobbing me three and a half minutes.
Thank you, Ron.
I appreciate if you've done something.
Okay, we are still open for public comment. If anybody would like to provide public comment, star six, unmute yourself, turn your mic on, turn your video on, get our attention if you would like. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? 7211.
Greg Wagner with C. Ron is correct. You guys lack compassion, integrity, morals, and empathy and ethics. He is spot on that you do not care about the citizens of this county. You care about yourself and the people that are important to you only. But I have another comment. Ochi Lindblad, county planning director, has a degree in business and communication seemingly unrelated to her job. She has made numerous mistakes. She permitted Lunt Hill Solar 15 months before all the conditions of approval were completed. She did over 40 questionable MDNs in the Under Canvas project, and she relies on the Under Canvas Corporation to supply her with county required studies. During the Under Canvas hearing, she was asked questions about her job duties, and she answered over 40 times, "I don't know." Why haven't you commissioners questioned her ability to do her job correctly? Do you have 100% confidence in all the statements and decisions that she makes? And I would also like to point out that the EOZ that Mr. Souter bragged so much about, he told me he was on the planning commission for the EOZ. And the EOZ was primarily written for wind. It has virtually no ordinances in it for solar. And surprising that the planning commission also recommended to have a standalone EOZ. And one of the members on that commission was no other than Dave Souter. And now he acts like we have solar ordinances. I'd like for you to provide those to the citizens of the county. Where are those solar ordinances, Mr. Souter? And as far as we have the only EOZ in the state that and the other counties are trying to play catch up, as you said on last week's radio interview, maybe the other counties realize that the EOZ is one of the worst things they could do to their citizens of their county, and that's why they don't have an EOZ. The EOZ is a open door policy for wind and solar. Primarily wind is what it was written for. Solar's in on it, and there's nothing to control the growth, regulate, anything about solar. And that's your responsibility. Yakima County commissioners make you guys look bad, and it doesn't take much to make you look bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. All right. 0088, have you spoke before?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Dale, if you wouldn't mind waiting until everybody else has had a chance?
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? Star six, unmute yourself, turn your video on, turn your camera on, get our attention. I am not seeing anyone. Okay, Mr. Eldred, because... Mr. Cancela, I gave him an extra minute. I will give you one extra minute.
Okay. I just want to say that I feel what Ron had to say was very important, and I was disappointed that you guys wouldn't give him consideration to talk to him there. I just, I think you were wrong. That's my comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Eldred. Okay, I will open this one last time for any further public comment. Is there anybody who has not spoken who would like to provide public comment to the board of county commissioners? I am not seeing any. Would either of my seatmates like to... Oh. 7211.
Hi, Greg Wagner with C. I'd like to have another minute also.
You didn't use your full three minutes, Mr. Wagner, so you're more than welcome.
Well, so did Ron, and you gave him an extra minute. You just gave Dale extra minute. So as far as fairness, you guys claim you're fair. I...
Please go ahead, sir.
You know, I've listened to a lady named Ivy who came to you guys more than two or three times asking for help with the unpermitted gun range, and you showed no emotion. You've done nothing for her. Several weeks ago, I heard a lady come on, and she was crying all upset about some gate on some road preventing EMTs from getting there. You showed no compassion or empathy for either of these ladies. That's what's wrong with you guys. You don't care about anybody but yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner, for your comment. Would like to go first of either of my seatmates.
I will go later when it's time when there's no rebuttals.
Well, there's no rebuttals. It was the last chance for public comment, so there are no rebuttals. If you'd like, there you go.
Mr. Cancela.
Yes.
Do you want to come up so we can actually have a conversation? I think you misunderstand the reason that we cannot have a give and take as far as, which is how we always used to do it. Citizens, generally speaking, and we can have a difference of opinion, sir, but generally you came in, if you came in and asked a question, we responded.
Yeah.
The climate has changed significantly.
I understand that.
And so while I would love to be able to do that in real time with you when you were here doing that, unfortunately, what happens then, if I can't do that with everybody, it's not fair. And so the chair has instituted a policy, which I support, is that people get their time to give their public comment. We give response because what happened is that people that used up all the time and give and take, there was people that didn't get to ask or make a comment. And so that's why. It is not to avoid having a conversation. I love to have conversations. As to what the issue that you raised, I'm totally open with, and I don't know that we... If somebody... This building's open from 8 o'clock to 5 o'clock anyway, as far as to the public. There's nothing that prevents anybody from coming into this building. We have a huge lobby downstairs with couches and stuff. To my knowledge, we don't run people out. There's, I don't, when I see people sitting down there, I don't know if they're on county business or if they're just enjoying the coolness of the building. I am totally fine with that. As far as some kind of formal thing, where we set up some heat shelter kind of thing, I think we need to organize that if we're going to do that because things can get out of hand sometimes. I am kind of curious, though. You said the Father's House had it, and they had three people yesterday. You know, my experience, we did actually, in Lisle, the Lions Club did it last year during the really bad heat wave, and they had one person, which, again, one person that was, you know, for them, that was really important. Again, I'm not opposed to doing any of that. But the reason I want to do it is because it's the right thing to do, not because it will make me more popular. I don't care. We make decisions based on what's the important thing, not, I'm not, you know, especially now, you know, I'm not running for reelection.
I understand that.
So it doesn't make any difference. And I suspect the people that you are speaking with, the people that are consuming what is on the air every day on the radio, it's not going to make any difference to anyone. So, and you know that from being the mayor for all those years.
I know when I walked out the door in the night, and if I just had an argument, one of the alligators usually was coming out to the meeting and biting at me. They would talk to me, and it was civil. They would, we could go out and be... And I've had people, one guy that was on my case for the whole four years if I was the mayor. But when he got, when I left the office, he went to the paper that used to print all the stories about all of our stuff, said, "Even though I didn't agree with Ron on lots of things, he was always willing to talk to us. Even if we didn't win, he was always willing to discuss it." That's the problem I have with the way you guys are dealing, right? The fact that I got to come in here to give you three and a half minutes of my time, and I can't expect an answer. And I don't know the results because I see what you do after I would bring something up. So it's the point of the thing, back and forth. And I understand people that want your time all the time. I've taken lots of your time right now, but it's past that time. But that's, at least, you listen and you answer. And I don't get that when I come here lots of times. I don't come all the time because I'm 83 years old. I'd already done all that stuff a lot. I don't want to do it anymore. But when I see this situation right here today, as hot as it is, and there's no action, that's bothersome to me.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
I guess on that issue, I would chine in, that if there was a need for a cooling shelter in this building, yes, it's open. Anybody can use it. If it needs to be organized and ran and water and whatnot, I would not have a problem with it, but I would, at least by using forethought, I would have concerns of cross-communication with the general public. And are we competing with WOGAP and potentially confusing the general public on where is the cooling shelter? Because now you have multiple ones. So I would say if they want to host it here, that's fine with me. If they want to host it there, that's fine with me. If that one gets full and they need overflow, that's great.
It's not going to get full. That's not the point.
But if there's only three or four people and you have multiple cooling shelters in the same community, I think you might confuse people on where the cooling shelter actually is. So not that I have a problem with it, but I would want to discuss that with our partners, WOGAP, who are doing the cooling shelter.
I was already over there and talked to Daryl this morning, so see how they were doing as far as numbers of people. And it varies.
As far as getting the message out, yes.
They do lots of stuff for the community, far more than anybody for the community on that kind of caring about people. They do lots of it.
Right. But I would bet you, if you research it, they've also been working with public health to put on such cooling shelters.
Well, I talked to public health yesterday here. They were happy that I was out trying to do something. I talked to your people down here in the senior people that run the senior department. And that's who I would say, if you wanted to do something, go down and say, what are their duties? Take care of seniors, right? If we get anybody, it'll probably be seniors. And put that out tomorrow morning, put out people driving the road, telling people how to get here, people on the radio telling people how to get here. Look, if we save one life by doing something, it's a good life.
No argument.
And if we don't, and we just say, screw it, you take care of yourself. You know, that's the alternative.
Right. My argument is not, not that it's a bad idea. I think we have a facility that we're using, and I would agree that there needs to be more education and more outreach.
But do it now. You can't wait till the next 109 days. 109 days is that hot. 105.4 yesterday. I don't know what it's going to be today.
But community members can do it as well. You can call it a the radio show and explain the cooling shelter.
Oh, yeah. I already talked about that this morning. I talked on the radio about that. And because they're more than happy to do those things. But I got to have an idea that if we get some people to participate, or how are we going to get the people to participate? I don't know. Could be, nobody shows up. Who knows? But there again, only ones it takes to make it worthwhile. And that's the way I look at life pretty much.
Mr. Cancela, I would like to point out for the record that the reason that we have, we do not have back and forth is that just this discussion on just your point has taken up almost 11 minutes of our time.
That's great.
Which then means that we're not able to respond to all the other people who gave other comments. And only two of my seatmates have even responded in that amount of time. That is why we instituted this, so that we can.
That's fine.
And not only that, but as soon as you've brought this to our attention, I responded to you. Not everything has to be done in public. Not everything has to be done in front of all three commissioners. When somebody brings an issue before us, someone, if not the clerk, responds to them. We are very responsive.
I was surprised this morning when I got the email, and I was happy that I got the email. I knew, already knew that my I knew, already knew that my father's place was doing it. I didn't know that, but you, you've told me is it WAGAP. I already knew that. Yesterday I talked to him, so, anyway, okay.
So I, I would, I would say that there are many things that should and can be done in times of excessive heat. And one of those things is the most important, and that is that the community itself. Each of us knows other elderly people in the community, and it's called welfare checks, and those are very important. So we have, we have a cooling shelter. We should all support that cooling shelter. If it gets full, we'll, we'll make a new one. It's not very difficult.
You talking about my, my father's place?
Absolutely. And there's one in White Salmon. There's one in the Dells. There's one in Stevenson. Okay? These are open. They're available. If people need rides, they can reach out to their neighbors. Anybody can call me at any time, and we can ensure that someone gets a ride and they're safe. The important thing is, is that the community works together to ensure that all the community members are safe and healthy.
But you could be on the radio tomorrow morning and say what you just said, and that you were talking to your staff about putting water down in this room right below us, right now. And you'd have to put a staff in there just to keep organized.
Ron, we have a cooling shelter that is staffed with water and everything. Until it's full, why would we create another one? You understand resources.
Yeah. Why, yeah, that's, that's, that's the reason why. This is a much better facility than the facility that they're in. I know that, but that's okay. If they go there, that's fine too. But another one may, may, may come here if they know us here. There's lots of people know about this place. They've never participated in this place. Anyway, I won't, I won't go any further. If you go on the radio and say what you just said about, about worrying about the people, do that. That shows you care.
I think the first thing we're going to do is ensure that we have a banner on the county website that directs people to the cooling shelter, with the warning of the, with the warning, the heat wave.
And I would also encourage citizens that care about this issue deeply to get involved in this issue deeply, volunteer their time at our Father's House.
Yeah.
Many of us volunteer in our community. It's important to put your money where your mouth is and, and get yourself involved in your community. And you could do that by donating, donating your time at our Father's House at the cooling shelter.
Yeah.
So I would encourage that on the radio as well.
I spent three or four of my hours' time, just two days, trying to see what I could get organized. And that's, that's the only thing I've done so far. I volunteer for other things, but that was, this, this one to come up to my mind, this is very important. People die lots, and people dive in places from overheating. Anyway, I won't go any further. You know what my feeling is? I wish you would talk to the people more, but you don't. I wish you'd get on the radio and talk to them. They'll let you on. They have the open call after eight thirty, after they get all the, you know, regular show, then they have call-ins.
We're regularly on the radio, Mr. Consella.
And I've told Julian I'd be on whenever he wants me on, I would.
Oh, I know. I, I understand all that. I, I listened to that show again the second time this morning that you had, just recently had with Julian. But personally, on the live, right now, if you get on there, it might mean something to some people. They would say, oh gee whiz, they, they do care. There are lots of people don't know that you care.
Well, thank you, Mr. Consella, for your time, and thank you for all the volunteering you've done in this community.
Thank you very much for allowing me to talk to my piece.
Would either of my seatmates, we're running a little late, but I think we don't have to do a bid opening exactly on time. Would any, either of my seatmates like to respond to anything else?
I have a quickie.
Please.
Regarding, I mean, everything else we heard from everybody else was regarding potential false statements. Just looking at the last email sent from CESE, and I'll do something they don't do, and that's quote, quote, "These companies make large sums of profits annually, and then the county gives them tax breaks," end quote. I would be curious what these county tax breaks are. I know there's state tax breaks, but there are no county tax breaks, so that would be a false statement. So that should prove false statement. The next one, quote, "They continue to say the Department of Revenue must tell them how to tax wind and solar." Yes, that is a hundred percent true. The Department of Revenue doesn't tell us. They tell the assessor. So when you think it's us that get to do the taxing, why aren't the commissioners addressing these tax revenue problems? Because first off, that's an assessor, and the commissioners are trying to work with the state to change the legislation at the state level on how they tax. Here's, here's another false statement, and I quote, "The commissioners are now discussing outsourcing solid waste in the IT department." Completely false statement. So here's another false statement, "Tax revenue is unknown because the county doesn't know how to tax Lund Hill." That is a false statement, so that should prove that there are false statements, and that is just a quick scan through the last email of hundreds. I would also add that the comment Sherry made that the prosecutor wanted us to create solar ordinances. I would not speak for the prosecutor on this situation, but I said, I would say you might want to double check with him that he actually said that, because I think you will find out that that is a false statement. With that, I have nothing to prove.
Thank you, Commissioner Christopher. Commissioner Soder?
It's, it's not even worth the effort.
No.
I, I, I don't even know how to respond. We, I have, I have, we have responded multiple, multiple times. Mr. Eldred, I will do that because I can give you one example. As far as, no, the county, when we are getting, we have a public records request and we respond to that and give a public document, those documents are the documents that we have. Those are accurate. They are not false or untrue information. They're the actual documents. I will just add one other example because it was quoted from, it's a, it's an example of Mr. Wagner in his testimony or his comment, this was, you know, six weeks or so ago, about, came in with the property that the, the, no, the, the the wind farm that's at the top of the hill, you know, and said, oh, well, the tax statement says they only pay eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars in taxes, or whatever the number was. I hate to use a number because I, then I'll get called on on that if it was eight hundred and ninety-six dollars, or it was eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And this, and use that as proof of solar doesn't, or wind doesn't pay any taxes. They're not, it's like, was that number inaccurate? No, that was an actual number from the tax thing. It was on the underlying property. The, the project that he was referencing is the largest taxpayer in the county. So that's what I'm talking about. Would miss, the information was, was factually correct, but it was, it was out of context from, and it was being used to try to make a false statement, to support a false point of view. That's what I mean when I say it's not, it's not worth trying to do. We have done that and done that and done that, and it's, it's a waste of time. And, you know, frankly, I don't respond to bullies. And I think we have several bullies in this county right now. And unfortunately, I think they're winning. Because when we have an atmosphere of bullies and misinformation, then good folks that have spent generations building reputations and have contributed to the, the benefit of the community, stop caring, and they stop doing that. And then the bullies win, and that's what I'm seeing going on in this county, and it's very disturbing to me. Folks that I have, that have always been, you know, solid members, that have participated, that have stepped up, are not stepping up anymore because what's the point? So that's, that's very sad. And so we create the world that we want, and some people are creating the world that they want.
It's. But, uh, come on forward. Since we're, we're, we're off, off schedule, sorry, sir, but.
It won't take thirty seconds. Dan is right. The state.
In front of the mic.
In front of the mic.
So everybody can hear it, please.
The state specifically, the Department of Revenue is the one that tells the assessor what to do, how to do it, and also the Treasurer's Office, what to do, how to do it. Any questions? Because I'm on the Board of Equalization and it's, 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 it's all RCW's wax and presidents and law. And that's, that's the way it is. It's out of the county's hands, whether it's the assessors or the county treasurer.
That was the last email I received from one of the callers, is they wanted us to violate state law and tax it a different way than state law says to do it, and they're angry with us because we won't violate the law.
Well, I just want to make a clarification of the state, but it's specifically Department of Revenue.
Mr. Melko, I think I can add to that. It has been brought up multiple weeks, and it's trying to throw the commissioners under the bus for not making these changes, even though it's under the assessor, and it's also throwing the assessor under the bus. And they're telling everybody in the community. But RCW eighty-four forty-four twenty, the valuation of renewable energy projects, okay? Under subsection three, county assessors must refer to this guidance, including cost-based appraisal method and industry-specific valuation tables when evaluating renewable energy property. It's clearly in the state law, but these people continue to go on the radio and they continue to say things like, we're not doing our jobs and we're not doing what, in essence, they want us to do. I firmly believe that these renewable energy projects shouldn't be at the cost-based method because it depreciates. I think it should be at the income-based method. It would make far more sense. But I'm not the decision maker. The state legislature is the decision makers when it comes to this. And you're going up against other lobbies that want to see it a different way. And that's just the facts of the matter. So I thank you very much for standing up for what you do on the Board of Equalization. You guys are thankless volunteers who spend your time doing a great job, and I thank you very much for it. And I'd like to thank all of the other volunteers who serve on our many boards, who donate their time to this county, who have not given up hope, who won't, don't believe in being bullied. I really respect everything you've done for this community.
Well, thank you so much. I, I, I didn't come up here for accolades. I just wanted to, to be a little more specific than Dan was Department of Revenue.
I appreciate it. Thanks, sir. And thank you for volunteering in your community.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and for the record, must is mandatory. It's not you.
It's not shall.
It's not shall. It's not may. It's, it is shall.
It's shall.
Okay, I'll respond to something. It's been almost two years of sitting here, and every week, somebody's saying that you lack compassion, you lack integrity, you lack morals, you lack empathy, you lack ethics. And that's about a weekly occurrence that people are saying this to us. Anybody who knows me, anybody who's known my volunteerism in this county for my entire life, anybody who's spent any time around me knows that that is not me. That's not who I am. That's not how I interact. God forbid I wouldn't have this job if any of that were true. There's a reason why I say thank you for your comment. Because I, like Commissioner Soder, do not believe that being a bully or treating people with disrespect or calling people names is deserving of a response. Because that is considered negative reinforcement, and that's something I don't believe in doing, okay? When you come after all of my department heads questioning their abilities, questioning what they have in their college degrees, people who have worked in this county for twenty years, and every week you're putting in another public records request, you're calling them names, you're saying that they have no knowledge and no expertise. Well, to all of you out there, I firmly support my directors. I firmly believe that our elected officials are doing the best they can in a very difficult environment that many of these people are making more difficult for them. We are public servants. We don't always get it right a hundred percent of the time. We never will. But you know what? We're doing the best we can under adverse circumstances, that you can either make things better and help, or you can be part of the problem. Go out, volunteer in your community, join, join a fraternal organization, do good things. But continually attacking department heads, are you trying to drive away all of our employees? Is this, is this the goal of what you're trying to do, is burn it all down? I'm sorry, but I'm not going to support this. I'm, almost at my wits' end on continuing to be polite because sooner or later, there's always a reckoning. And you continue to send email after email after email with misinformation that every time I respond to it, takes me five hours of my time, that I'm not working on mental health, that I'm not working on all of the other issues that we have in senior services and economic development and something else, responding to maybe five or six people in the community who are trying to, you know, make us look like we are the villains in, in their grand epic. I'm sorry, but anybody who knows us knows that that's not who we are. And so, you know, I've had this conversation with you many times that if you want a response, if you want action, you have to do it in a civil manner. You have to show that, you know, we are better than that, and we will continue to be better than that. And with that, we are fifteen minutes late on public comment. And just so, for the record, not everything has to be done here in front of the camera. Anybody can call me anytime and I'll have a conversation, and I will help you through your problem, whatever it may be. With that, we are going to move to the bid opening for the improvement of our four parking lots in the city of Goldendale.
One whole bid. Oh, that's a, that's a little scary.
How are you today, sir? Thank you. I need two of them for one bid.
I wanted to make sure you had enough paper to write out that bid.
All right. Well, Mr. Chair, it, it appears we have one bid for this project.
May the force be with you, sir.
Find out. It is from Lee Contractors LLC Battleground, Washington. I have my finger. It's, it's, my finger's quite sharp today.
It was your tone.
Bid bond is present. Ooh, wait a minute. Let me make sure that that is the final page. Okay, I just want to make sure.
First page is already over.
Total bid, one million, one hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents. One comma, one zero two comma, seven 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 point eight zero. For the record, the engineer's estimate was somewhere between six hundred and, six hundred thousand and one million dollars.
Rip on the top of the sheet if you wanted to read the actual estimate.
Oh, it was an actual number?
Yeah.
Sorry. Eight hundred, uh, let me, so that is somewhere between six.
Right.
Eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars was the. Engineers like to be very precise, so I, I understand that.
And let the record show, that is two hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars over the engineer's estimate, also known as twenty-five percent of the price.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to return this bid, sorry, to Public Works for a review and a recommendation.
I would begrudgingly second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seth, do you see prices potentially going down in the near future? I know this is a late bid and only having one bidder.
Yeah. And the ones that are in charge what they want because they know they don't have any competition.
Yeah, so. Well, consider that in your recommendation.
That's, that was the discussion. Thank you, gentlemen, for having us. Okay, there's been a motion and a second and discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, next.
Rattle's not so bad for a while.
Next, we will move to a public meeting to consider the final approval of boundary line adjustment BLA twenty-two-two dash zero six. Applicants Gabriel and Mitzi Moore and Carl Moore. Applicants Gabriel and Mitzi Moore and Carl Moore. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. This boundary line adjustment BLA 2022-06 is a proposal to adjust the common property lines between parcels 02132112140100, It's off of State Highway, excuse me, State Route 14 and Grandview Drive. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of Section 21, Township 2 North, Range 13 East, Willamette Meridian, Clickatack County, Washington, in the Murdock vicinity. The administrative review of this boundary line adjustment has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from Road, Health, Treasurer, and Planning Departments. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it is in the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant the approval, the final approval of BLA 2022-06.
All right.
Can I see the milers real quick?
Turn your head sideways. Like I was doing.
I'm trying to get ahead of it, yeah, so I don't, yeah.
That may have been from gritting my teeth so hard, but... I don't, I don't care.
Okay, that answered my question.
If, is there any issues anybody found from reviewing it?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve boundary line adjustment BLA 2022-06. The applicants are Gabriel and Mitzi Moore and Carl Moore.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve boundary line adjustment BLA 2022-06. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, we were going, ooh, going to sign this first. Next, we will move to new business. Director Carter, please come forward.
I just wanted to provide a department update in terms of personnel. So Aileah Bous, who had been our emergency temporary hire, passed case manager to help out when our other case manager was on medical leave and then did not return. She finished up her support yesterday, and thankfully, we do have a new case manager who has accepted the position for the permanent spot for the full-time case manager for Goldendale office, and it's Chris Tuie. He will start on August 16th. And he has an extensive mental health and social work background, so he is going to be somebody I think that's going to be able to jump in very readily. He had excellent references from previous long-term employers. So, but in order for him to provide adequate notice at KBH, and also, he had a vacation planned, he's not available to start until mid-August. So, and Aileah had another position heading onto. So during this next interim couple of weeks, it'll be myself and Christie Doty, my other case manager, that'll manage the caseload for this and during that time period, because it will take some time for training with Chris. It's a pretty extensive training with the state. And that too, that I'll be working with Ad Swa on, because it's been, gosh, over 15 years that we've had a change in that position. So it's, it's a bit involved to train somebody new, so. But we're very happy to, and then we, our administrative assistant, our new administrative assistant spot that had come open in Goldendale, because that person went into the transportation coordinator position, who went to emergency management. It has started, she did training in her initial orientation yesterday. We'll be doing a little bit of training tomorrow, and then starts fully on Monday. So thankfully, we're looking at mid-August, that I'll be fully staffed, so I'm excited about that. Transportation services, so I had mentioned previously that the consolidated grant, this is the grant year for applications. So typically, we've had a biennium of funding, or actually, with our dialeride, they had extended that out on existing continuing projects that we were able to get four years of funding previously. Well, all that funding expires June of next year. The grant application process just opened with Washdod, and the grant application will be due by October 27th, I believe. So I will, I did want to talk just in general terms. I know you'll want specific numbers. But in terms of just even pursuing, continuing our existing transportation service, our dialeride service that has been running since the 80s, and is very much an essential support for all Clickatack County residents, but especially our vulnerable adults and disabled folks. And then continuing application renewal for our fixed route shuttles that are in Goldendale to the Dows and Hood River, to White Salmon and Hood River, to see if the board is supportive of continuing to pursue that, obviously, with coming back to you with what that costs, because their costs are obviously going up in those areas. And so, looking at in terms of what that's going to be to continued existing service, I'll definitely have figures for you, but I'm currently working on those budgets right now. But I don't want to spend that time if you are absolutely against, you know, renewing any of those services. So that's request one. The other one is, I will also be discussing our need for some replacement vehicles. So obviously, with those, there's match requirements. Typically, the capital requests are an 80/20, where the grant covers 80%, and then we do it, we have to provide a 20% match for those, and we will have a need to replace some of our vehicles to keep operating service. The other request would be whether or not there were areas that you wanted to see too about us perhaps applying for funding. Washdod has sent a number of communications that they have received a lot more funding into the consolidated grant program, because the consolidated grant program incorporates federal and state funding in a pot that we can apply for. And so, you know, one of the requests that we've had ongoing ever since we started the fixed route shuttle service was a connection between Goldendale and White Salmon via Lisle, Clickatack, you know? Well, and we are operating all on the Washington side anyway. I mean, in terms of when we go from Goldendale to the Dows, it's, we go through Wishram, down in Wishram, and pick up folks there, and we pick up folks at Dallasport and cross over. Where their gap is with connecting those two is between basically Benjen and Dallasport. There's no connection currently there, so a number of folks in Lisle have addressed. And then there has been requests, obviously, with Clickatack, you know, we're coming back through that way. Although there has been reference that they are looking at possibly a Greyhound line running through from Yakima and back through Clickatack and out around. But, and whether or not that was going to move forward at some point. But there's been some discussion apparently with Greyhound on that and more. So the other area that we've chatted just briefly about too is with the change of, you know, our old senior services building. We had kind of area with some protected area for some of our vehicles and kind of like coast area to work on them. Now, without having that, we have kind of, obviously, various areas. We do have some designated parking over by the bank and that too, but we don't have any covered or secured parking. We've had, did have, you know, a couple of catalytic converters stolen this last year, a different, you know, kind of vandalism issues. And so, one of the things was looking at, given that they're indicating there's more funds available in the consolidated grant program, is we do have the ability to apply for an actual building, kind of a bus barn shelter slash maintenance kind of opportunity. Under that, where again, a bulk of those funds would be from grant, match, again, usually on those types of structures, it's usually an 80/20 as well. Of course, these, the consolidated grant program is all a competitive grant process too, though, so we definitely would have to argue for that. But whether or not that was something the board would be interested in pursuing, I know in the past, we already talked about where the old annex was, that we were temporary at, where the health department was, that that lot would be a good place to potentially do some covered parking or structure there. So rather than, obviously, you're going to want to know, like, a price tag, but if, I want to know if you're even interested in looking at that as an option for this grant funding round, because I don't want to spend the time on it if you're not interested.
You guys always look at me first. Next year, you can't do that.
I don't.
I guess where I'm at personally is expanding bus service. I would imagine there would be an expanded cost to expanded bus service if we're trying to connect Goldendale to White Salmon.
Right, there would, there would be a price tag with that.
So I would say, is it something I want to do? Yes, but going into the budget that we're going into and going into the recession, I don't feel it would be a sound investment at this time. That's my personal.
Okay.
Should you continue applying for the grant for what you currently have? My opinion is yes. Should you apply for the grant for the building, the bus barn? Yes. I think that was all of the ones you had, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, there's basically three questions.
I think I got them all.
Do I waste my time filling out the grant application for the, what we already have?
Just the research on, I mean, I have, you know, Columbia Area Transit and Link have both done some, you know, shelter transit center, you know, and a lot, you know, there's prefab kind of options and things available, but before, before even spending a lot of time on getting that information, you know, if you're not supportive of it, that's, I mean, it's, all of that is a lot of time for me to do if it's not of any interest. And I get that ultimately, the applications, you're wanting, you're going to want to know what the bottom line is in terms of...
And I would imagine you would work with Gordy if we went...
Yeah, yeah.
Talking about a, you know, $3.7 million building or some fancy thing. 20% of that is a lot higher than 20%.
Yeah, no. I'm not, yeah, like, roads and things, my stuff is not priced in those price ranges typically.
So, for me, yes, I, I'd support, I would, I would echo Commissioner Christopher on the, you know, expansion of service. I think this time it's, it's not prudent right now until we, until we see. You know, but I do support keeping our existing service and applying for the renewal on that.
Okay.
The bus barn, yes. I mean, and I think that, that was at least, it was contemplated that, you know, eventually that was on our list of things that we wanted to put on there, because you, because there was the acknowledgement that it's a need, it was something. It makes it a little harder after we just opened the bids for the parking lot, for the asphalt, you know, because we've had a little bit of cushion from, from the project overall, although most of that has evaporated. Actually, today, I may have completely eliminated it, so, if we even go forward with that. But yeah, as far as the grant, you know, if we were going to do it anyway, and we can get an 80/20 match, that's, sounds like a bonus to me.
And, and you know, and there's some efficiency operationally with having, you know, there is time spent uncovering
Right.
vehicles from snow and ice and, and just your asset of that.
Yeah, and what does a catalytic converter cost?
Well, we spent several thousand dollars. I mean, the insurance covered some of it.
Which we are paying, that's part of the
Well.
increase. Yeah, insurance companies don't lose money.
Well, no, yeah, and that is an area that our costs, you know, and the liability side of things too, you know, and the additional commercial coverage insurance. I mean, we have a big portion of that county insurance cost, because it hurts every year. It keeps going up significantly, so. So I think there could be some benefits from it, because, you know, right now, that's one of the things when they come look at what are, well, we're just out on the street and wherever, there's no security, there's no, I mean, and they look at that potential loss too, and protection of those, so.
Question and comment on your graph here.
Yeah.
It looks like the White Salmon numbers are back to normal, pre-COVID normal, but the Goldendale numbers are still lower than normal. Any idea on why?
Yeah, well, you know, I do think some of it would be, you know, the Dollar General opened in the meantime. There was a lot more, I think, folks heading into, for shopping, you know, for some of those. And Dollar General, what does provide, like, a lot of varied things at pretty cheap prices. So I think that may be some of it. We did do an adjustment though to the schedule, because there was a change that we were doing fewer round trips to the Dows to try and do a bit more of an inner-city one, but we weren't, the use wasn't happening, so we went back to the four. So I think we've noticed actually that there's been a bit of an uptick, I anticipate, through the summer that may continue to increase. You know, the challenge was even though pre-pandemic, we, it takes time with fixed route. At least, you know, I'm not a transit expert. I've had to learn a lot about transit in the last 15 years. And based on others that specialize in transit, it does take time to establish those, and with the fact that we were shut down for a length of time, it's a challenge. But I do know that part of the gorge paths and some of the marketing that's going along with the grant that they have, that Maquette is working with, and with the tourism association, all that there, they are going to do some more concerted effort on local outreach, because they had been focused a lot on tourism and Portland and bringing that out. And both Sophie and I, you know, Sophie was Skamania County, and I had talked about, we feel like there needs to be a lot more outreach and education about this service and how to use it to more local folks too, to understand it. I think there's still a lot of education and outreach and training, because people, when, if you haven't lived somewhere where there's been fixed route service, it seems like an obvious thing how to use it, but it isn't. There's a lot of benefit of travel training, people understanding how that flows. So, so I think there's potential for a lot more growth, but I just wanted to kind of give an idea of where things we're looking at.
I really like this, and that's where the comment comes in. I would love another one down here for dialeride.
Yeah, and I will, the, yeah, and, yeah, and dialeride is, you know, we are picking back up again, but I mean, we went from kind of, you know, doing 20,000 rides a year down to, you know, during the pandemic, it was like 5,000 trips, you know? I mean, a pretty substantial change. We are picking, we are building back up and that as things open up, and, and so we're definitely more in line with that, but we're, this last year, and that we're not going to be at that 20,000 yet. But I'll definitely provide more of a chart for the dialeride. But I thought the fixed route is often the one that's kind of asked about, because the other thing is, you know, I had, you know, the comments kind of... other thing is, you know, I had, you know, the, the comments kind of, oh, empty buses. And I had, you know, somebody, a member of the public had called and said, oh, there's an empty bus out, what's it doing out here on, why is this empty bus? Well, you know, I said, okay, let me look this up and see, well, you know, there will be times you'll see an empty bus because we have to go pick up people, you know, that when we're doing Dial-A-Ride too, it's, we may be picking somebody out up in, you know, several people like for the senior center, because that's part of senior transportation, we're to bring people into the senior meal site. It's going to be empty as we head out to pick people up, or after we've dropped everybody off and it's coming back, there will be times the bus is empty. In terms of, you know, the fixed route and that too, there have been times that we've done, you know, a number of stops and there's nobody that gets on, and then the next day we've got 20, you know, people getting on it each. There's, it's hard to find a rhyme or reason yet with some of the fixed route, but the Dial-A-Ride, I can definitely always answer what's going on with this or, you know, and sometimes we have to send a larger bus out for a wheelchair passenger because they're in a specialized wheelchair that can't go in the minivans, even though we had, we try to look at the most efficient way, there are times that people have to have special accommodations too. So certainly if you have any members of the public asking, you know, questions or wanting to understand how the transportation works too, I'm happy to answer those because I think there's a lot of thought that, oh, my tax dollars, well, they're, yeah, your tax dollars are going into being available in a consolidated grant program. If we don't apply for any of those funds, we're not getting any benefit from those taxes you're paying because we're, if, if we don't apply, then there's nothing being provided with those taxes that we're paying in for service because currently there's no local tax support of transportation in Clickatet County. It's all grant funded and contracted, you know, with Medicaid, so.
That is the standard argument from the public is they're probably spending millions of like taxpayer dollars on that and there's nobody on the bus.
Yeah.
And, and my argument back is no, it's a very small percentage of our dollars. It's mostly state grant money that, like you said, if we don't accept, it's just going to Yakima County or Grand County.
And it, and it is going to be different, different counties, different areas have transit districts where you're paying a transit tax and that is going to help, but that transit tax isn't running the whole thing, they're all applying. But in terms of, I'm happy to talk to people, you know, in detail about how, you know, if they have questions on how that's happening and why, and what kind of support we're provided, so. It varies, so it depends on, you know, in each project, so right now, this last biennium, the fixed route, our match is 26%, and then the remainder is, is from the grant for our fixed route shuttle service. For the Dial-A-Ride, it is currently 50, I think we may be, we're 51% and, and the grant is 49%. Typically in close to 50/50 in there. And then in our, we have had vehicles in this, in the past biennium, and those were 80/20.
And I would assume that some of our percentage is being paid for out of acronym groups?
Yeah, so, well, we use the match, we're eight with Dial-A-Ride, so right now we've been with the fixed route, that's been our specifically cash out of that because we're already, we're doing match in the Dial-A-Ride program, we're using senior transportation, Medicaid revenue that comes from our contract.
But theoretically, if you didn't, I'm, I'm not speculating here, I'm just trying to get my head right, so I hope I don't hurt anybody's feelings. If we decided to reduce the Dial-A-Ride, we could save some of that cash from the acronym ACOG or whatever you keep saying.
ADSWAT.
ADSWAT, and use that in the regular transportation, or does it have to be in Dial-A-Ride?
No, I mean, you're still going to end up.
You could build one program or the other, how we see fit, is all.
We could decide where to do the match, but ultimately you're still, I mean, basically the way it's worked with the, the funding in the request with the budget, when you're coming from solid waste, you've pretty much designated about 140,000 to support transportation. And that's been kind of everything. And I would say the bulk of where that subsidy is really supported is when you work it all out with all our different sources coming together has been senior side of transportation because that funding has been insufficient to really cover what, how robust we provide for seniors because we haven't set a lot of limits on the senior transportation service in terms of a, a number of communities, you know, bigger cities, because of the population will say, okay, well, you can only do two trips a month or something like that, or whatever. You know, we don't currently have that parameter, but we could, and we could also limit the geographic area for it, so there's kind of a, it's all kind of.
Isn't that, I mean, and that is one of the things that we have kind of kept on the shelf, I'll say.
As, yeah.
As if the, you know, as far as for budgeting purposes, as we had, you know, the, because we obviously scaled back, we got rid of the home healthcare and the subsidy, you know, that it took to, for us to operate that, and that was like the biggest single thing. And then, but there.
Or the fewest amount of people that you're looking at the direct benefit.
And I'm in no way saying that that's where I think we're going this year, I just need my brain right, so, you know, if recession hits two years from now and it's so bad, there's red lines out front, I know how that department funding works out.
Yeah.
I'm not recommending anything when I ask that question.
So, as I'm looking at it, right now, June 2022, we have about 24 people riding the fixed routes per day. Okay, as I break that down, if I look towards August of 2021, it's about 23 people per day are riding the fixed route. Well, based on your number of 20,000 people a year on the Dial-A-Ride is 1,666 a month or 57 people per day. So we have roughly double the amount of people on the Dial-A-Ride service than we do on the fixed route service. Would you say that that's accurate from the way you see it?
Well, yeah, we, I mean, we definitely serving more in Dial-A-Ride because we're, I mean, those are by a point, and we're, the need is specific, and, and it's available throughout the county, we're putting, the cost is a lot more to operate Dial-A-Ride than it is a fixed route. Because Dial-A-Ride, you're, you may be doing a whole trip with one individual passenger on and you're doing a ton of miles and the wait time with a paid driver and that kind of thing, whereas fixed route is, you know, that, that set driver, those set stops and that more prescribed expense, I guess, too. So if you look at per trip cost though, and that too, you're definitely going to see a big difference between fixed route and Dial-A-Ride.
Right, but fixed route is, or Dial-A-Ride is getting people where they need to go. Fixed route might be getting them somewhere fairly close at the wrong time. I'm looking at overall, overall cost to community, understanding what works and what doesn't work. There's a reason that Uber is successful, you know, versus, you know, regular transportation. And so I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around this, I haven't made any decisions. Thank you for the 26%, you know, is, is our share on that fixed route. And of that 20, so what does that 26% cost us a year? Is that 140,000? Or no, that, you said that was the same.
Yeah, so I have to, so we're looking at, I have, yeah, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay.
I can.
So that's kind of, I mean, when I'm looking at, you know, going into a recession and what matters, you know, if we have 24 people riding per day, but those are the same 12 people who ride one way and then home, and it's the same P of 12 people, each day, every day, we're helping out 12 people for a significant subsidy and, you know, when we look at it. All I care about is, is making sure our money goes to the place that is best used for to help the most amount of people, how they needed help. I'm definitely 100% in support of the Dial-A-Ride. That is providing a need for a significant portion of, of the population who definitely need that service. Like the Dial-A-Ride, so what about the people who get picked up and taken to the senior center for lunch? Does that, is that part of Dial-A-Ride?
Yeah, yeah.
So that is just part of Dial-A-Ride?
Yeah.
And do you go around and do you pick up a bunch of seniors to take them in, or do you, you know?
It varies, so, you know, like, and it varies again from year to year and day to day, can be, so, I mean, we have like White Salmon, the meal sites Monday, Wednesday. Right now, they don't have many people that are, are utilizing the service to come in, but we also don't have a huge, huge numbers on that. But we've in the past had folks, you know, coming in from Trout Lake and BZ and need transportation, and so it kind of ebbs and flows. We let people know they can call at Golden Dale. Typically, it was taking us two buses to bring seniors into the senior center. Right now, we just have pretty much one that's been bringing folks in, and it can be anywhere from six people to, you know, a full bus on a day. Again, today though, we had people cancel because they weren't, they didn't want to leave because it was hot, it was going to be too hot, so. Yeah, so it.
Multiple people are riding on the bus. You don't send the bus out to get one person, take it back to the senior center, go back?
No, we go, we, we coordinate the route, I mean, depending on how people are going, but we would, I mean, there is potentially that we had, would have somebody that was scheduled and then the other five canceled, we're still getting that person in, so it's, it's, and then folks, and then we are doing, you know, that driver while they're eating at the senior center, they either taking their break, or they might be running some folks between their home to KBH for an appointment. We try to coordinate as many rides as possible within different settings, but there are times too that we're, one driver's taking one passenger into Portland for a specialist appointment, and then they have to wait there for them and come back.
So what percentage of the Dial-A-Ride do you think is just going to the senior center versus going to appointments?
Oh, tiny percentage.
Is the senior center?
Is the senior center.
Okay.
Yeah, no, when you're looking at overall folks using it, and I would say in terms of rider numbers, using Dial-A-Ride in terms of individual people, because we, we do do counts for each year, I mean, we've, it's rain, we're probably this year up to about 600 different individuals that are, have ridden the service this year. And that could be a person that just rode once because they were a hospital discharge, I mean, and they usually drive themselves or whatever, or it could be, we have some people that ride 20 times a month because they have a lot of medical appointments and things, or, or they're going to dialysis because we have, we have a number of people that go in three times a week for dialysis in the DOWs or in Hood River, and those vary. And occasionally, we've had folks that are on a weekend dialysis one, two, and that's the only time we do weekend services for essential medical. And in, we try to work with using volunteer drivers when it's out of those scope and the person's able to go in a regular car, but that's, it varies and it cycles with demand and need, so, just like there's days that we may be using all our vehicles and all our drivers, and then we have another day that suddenly it's like really quiet, I mean, but. But in terms of, yeah, knowing individuals riding the fixed route, we don't keep stats on those people because they're not registering with us and they don't really want us to know their business in terms of people getting on and off, you know, it would be a bit for the driver to try to track exactly that. So, so even some of those people are people that live in the, don't even live here, that are coming across as a tourist or for a visit. I mean, we've had people coming from the DOWs and.
How mu, are, are senior meals are still down, our in-person meal?
Yes.
How, how, are they down by half, are they down by more than?
Oh, about, at least about half. I mean, it's now, and then the recent weeks, it's been lower because there was a number of cases of COVID with some folks on this end of the county, so, so we're still doing a lot of home delivered meals, way more than we ever were doing because of the fact the folks being a bit reticent about going into group settings. But yeah, we're down to probably about half of the typical. I mean, there's always been days where we'll have a really big turnout and then one, but we're probably at least half of what is the typical.
Are they still playing music and bands, Eminem or anything?
No, that's been halted and that's been something they've not been happy about. And White Salmon, the request has been, so the issue is because there's dancing associated with that and the idea every time, we, we originally reopened in May because that's when the masking requirements came off. And we were hoping to start, you know, kind of music back up in June. We have resumed a number of different activities, they've got a bunco group, exercise group, and some of those that spread out. But each time, each month we've gone, there's been an uptick at either West End or East End, so we're in a high transmission rate again, and so we have said, I have said, I shouldn't say we, I should say I have said, in the interest of not shutting everything down because of multiple exposures, was not resuming the music yet.
When do you think you can resume the music? Because, I mean, honestly, you're down at half, half the number of people.
Yeah.
You're doing more trips out to people's houses.
Well, we're not doing.
People love, well, no, because you're doing the home delivered meals, so we're doing twice as many. People used to come in, they're not coming in.
Right.
I've heard they're not coming in because there's no music.
Yeah, and I would say though, the meals also, the issue is people being home, but they're not necessarily going to be coming, some of those people aren't going to be coming in too. So, you know. Yeah, and I guess where the quandary I've been in is that, you know, I was on health, with, phone with the health department like every day last week, with complaints, specifically there was a complaint about senior services to the health department about why we didn't shut down all the meal sites because there's been seniors with cases of COVID. Well, the COVID cases weren't seniors specifically at the meal site, it was folks that, the senior center has their own store and, and folks in there, and there was a number of folks, so it's like, well, we didn't have any indications that we had to shut down. And then on the other hand, so, well, let's do dancing and close contact, and so is that, I am, in terms of what I'm responsible for too, in our contracts with doing nutrition programming and things for seniors, is to look at the fact that still the people dying from COVID, even fully vaccinated and boosted, are the people 70 and older. So is it in the best interest to encourage a lot of people in a small group setting to have that close contact if that's the highest risk population for actual death? And so I'm looking at, you know, case count, we're in a high risk again, Clickatet was low, and I was like, oh, well, maybe we'll be able to, and now it's high again. And so I am looking at and reading different literature and talking with, you know, folks about, well, what does, you know, do we just say, bag it, let's go for it? It's, it's a very difficult thing because ultimately, it's going to be me that there are people will be saying, oh, why did you encourage this? And now we have all these people that have died because, because we have these new variants coming out and they're even more aggressive, and we weren't encouraging distancing in that. So, so I don't, I don't know when, I mean, I would love to just say, okay, yeah, let's just all get the music and everything going again, but I feel like I'm looking at what's going on in terms of the environment around us and having to make decisions based on that.
I have one other question. As far as me, my comfortability with your department, I'm comfortable, I do have questions with the Dial-A-Ride, you said, those that have registered with us. So I guess I would say if I just randomly call in from my house with Dial-A-Ride because I want to go to an appointment or go shopping in the DOWs, do you send a car, do I have to register, do I have to prove my income, do I have to prove my age, or any qualifications to get that Uber right into the DOWs?
Yeah, so you do, I mean, you have to call and ban, so we do get your information. We do part of our contract with senior transportation in order for it to be a right, you know, and it doesn't have to, you don't have to be a senior to access Dial-A-Ride service, but one of those things is we're going to get your address, name, date of birth, phone number, what the purpose of the trip is, because we don't have the resources just to. phone number, what the purpose of the trip is, because we don't have the resources just to run you to the DOWs because you feel like going to the movie theater. Yeah.
The reason I bring that up is because that is my only long-term concern with your department is potential abuse of the dial a ride by people using it. You know, when I see posts on Facebook from Dallas Port, oh, look, I saw that we, we now offer this $5 ride service. And people are like, no, 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 that's supposed to be for, but how many people are actually using it as an Uber? And, and we're subsidizing their Uber. So if they're, you know, seniors or they are in need or they, you know, I get it to some degree, but, you know, I also don't want to be providing the county's Uber service. So that's, that's the only part in there. I don't know that it can be cleaned up or any abuse is removed or not. But that's the only.
Well, I.
You were, you were mentioning when people complaining about tax dollars for the, for the fixed routes and, and I'll fight that one off. But when, when I, when they come at me with the $5 Uber rides, it's hard for me to be able to fight that one off.
Yeah, so we, we aren't doing $5 Uber rides, because I mean, it is, it is, you know, the, the use of the service is for medical, essential shopping, social services, types of appointments. And, but I'm not saying we're, we're not calling and verifying, did Mae Jones see Dr. So-and-so at? But, you know, they're, the driver's only able to take them to that destiny, you know, Water's Edge or whatever. I mean, I do know Medicaid, you know, the Medicaid, because it, within our dial a ride services, our contract with Medicaid clients. So folks that are in Washington, Apple Health Medicaid that have the transportation benefit, they do do a sampling review of, to verify appointments that they've provided for. And, you know, the abuse, I mean, there's always the potential for that, but to be honest, within a small community, it's a little less easy for people to do that because people will call and tell. And so then we kind of question and they're, so with anything and any of the service or programs we have, there's always the ability for somebody to potentially lie and, and work away, but I would say that would be a rarity.
And I would say I don't have a problem giving somebody a $5 Uber ride to a doctor's appointment, but if they're going to Home Depot, now I might question. So it's, it's kind of where they're going and if they're going shopping or doctors or, you know, things like that.
So some of where, where in terms of the numbers of rides and that, that we've been able to, typically what we have allowed is that if we are going for a medical appointment though, so say we're already taking several people for dialysis into the DOWs from this time to this time, and we know, if we have somebody that says, hey, I would, can I get a ride to the DOWs because I've got, I'm picking up a rental car or I'm gonna, I'm dropping my car off at the, for servicing or something at the dealership, can I get a ride back on that? We already are going there and back and we say, yeah, for $5, because we have different rates for that. But if that medical cancels, your ride cancels. So same within the past, we used to like, people want to go to the airport. We can't, we don't take you to the airport for the Uber rape. But if we're going for a medical, we'll take you, but that medical cancels, your airport ride cancels too. Which actually, this is, a number of people have, with the fixed route is the way that people can actually get to the airport though too. Because that connection goes all the way to the Gateway Transit Center if you, if you go across the, through CAT and all that. So, so we do combine because we're trying to figure, okay, well, if we're already going anyway, let's provide as much service. Now, we did during like major COVID restrictions where we weren't able to have other people in the vehicle. It was one, you know, in distancing, we weren't, that we eliminated, but that, but now there, those restrictions were more lifted that we have. So we're trying to get the biggest bang for the buck in terms of that. So to say we haven't taken somebody or dropped them at Home Depot, well, we're already in for a medical, so sure, we said, and then you come back and they have to go according to what our limits are on that.
Okay, so first question, yes. Second question, yes. Third question about CAT and, and them applying for funding. Are they going to be competing against us? Is there a possibility or is there plenty of money?
There would be plenty of money and the way the ranking, so the RTPO, Southwest RTPO, which is the Clickatap, Skamania and Clark. The rankings are, typically with the RTC group, the typical, and the ranking process that happens for the Consolidated Grant Program, the highest level always goes to maintaining existing projects. So potentially, if we were doing a new project, certainly it could be competitive against us in that, but it's likely going to be, because WashDOT will also, you know, their caveat to CAT applying is that they're going to have to, CAT's going to have to really argue what the benefit of the Washington side is getting from that. But this is one where, you know, there's requests and people say, oh, I'd like weekends, Wyatt isn't, you know, that would be a lot for us to expand our services to seven days a week, you know, year round. Whereas CAT is already doing weekend service because of Columbia Gorge Express. They've also been, I think they took over this year doing the Dog Mountain Run for Skamania County and doing the money that way. And so I had expressed that the county wouldn't be supportive of match, you know, because that's the issue. Otherwise, we, you know, but perhaps maybe the cities would want to provide match to support that. So I just wanted to make sure that that was okay too with you, that CAT and the county, you know, is looking rather than you wanting Mount Adams to do it and you're not, right? So.
That agreed.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay. And then unfortunately, the ZAP grant, which was what we talked about with that, providing a vehicle parking space up in Goldendale for an electric vehicle with that go forth, that funding, that, that expired with that. They said there would be a funding opportunity potentially next year for that. So, but I did hear that Benjen, White Salmon Benjen did get the ZAP grant for theirs. So they will have a electric vehicle car share for that because theirs had been submitted previously. And then I just wanted to comment on that Representative Mossbreaker, the advisory board had sent a letter just to emphasize, you know, their kind of frustration with the assisted living project and want, and the need for long-term care. She did come to a meeting and chat with them about it and then also wanted me to connect her with Joel to talk about some more of the specifics of it because she'd indicated there would be potential for her to actually address some in a capital request, but then it became more of an issue because of, there's a bigger. So then whether or not there was some advocacy on talking about why USDA has an issue with it and where things are at. So I don't know if you've had any updates.
Yesterday, as far as, we're still, we're still beating away on rural development. We have, we're waiting for them, for them to respond in writing because our council for the housing, we did get, not an official, we got the one before they do the one, because they said, they don't want to actually do the one until they get something in writing so they can respond to it. But they're completely flabbergasted. They were like, rural development, USDA has, is completely wrong in this. Of course, we're an eligible organization.
Right.
And they don't understand and I, and I'm wondering if that's the delay from council is that they're trying to figure out how to give Anita what she wants and they can't because Anita is wrong. So.
Yeah.
We're just waiting. So every week, so there was another one yesterday. So that's Joel every week is like, where are we at? Where's, what's going on? And it's like, oh, still waiting, still waiting for a response.
I didn't know if anybody with Mossbreaker's office was talking about whether there was something they could help in terms of advocacy wise too, just in terms of connecting and saying, what's going on? Why is this a problem? You know, we're concerned about this. And if he's heard anything more, I haven't touched base with Joel yet, so I can always.
We did discuss yesterday about kind of the advocacy piece with the both, you know, it's USDA is, is a federal agency, whether.
Right.
You know, we've held off as far as with Congressman Newhouses and with Congresswoman Hora Butler's, you know, kind of like what, what's going on here? Just because we're trying, again, this is all based on one person. So we're kind of waiting, we're hoping that they'll change their mind. And it's like, put it in writing. And that's what the attorney has said. Put it in writing, cite.
Yeah.
What you're using and then we can appeal it because you don't know what you're talking about.
Because it sounded like, you know, if it was in the smaller millions area, that there would definitely be.
Actually, we got a, Senator King was down, that was about a month ago. I don't know that there, I can't say. But I took him, showed him the project, did all the stuff. He was very engaged, said, give me the name of that. Because we had put a request in, because we, the original, you can only get 3 million out of State Department of Commerce. And they had awarded us 1.6. And then they, they raised the limit because I believe they have more money than they can spend. And so they raised it to 5 million, which we requested to have our allotment raised to 5 million, which would close the funding gap. It would, if rural development actually came up with the money. So they did raise it. So he asked, you know, who are we dealing with there? So we sent him the name. I don't know, coincidentally, you know, a week later, 10 days later, they said, oh, surprise, here's an extra 1.4 million. So we have, but there is still a gap.
Okay.
But it is narrowing and that's what he had committed to, that perhaps maybe a capital.
And that's what she said, she'd be happy to send the form over and fill out and do.
But I think with that, if RD actually would come up with what they're supposed to.
Because that's the big.
That's the big pile.
Yeah.
Then we're down to around 1.5-ish, which.
Well, the good conversation too with Gina was to kind of though, point out the issues though, that we're having just in terms of any kind of long-term care access for folks in, click it, not only in home, but also even a facility, because we, we have continually run in and I'm sure the hospitals will tell you the problem they've had where they've had people that need and want care and we can't find anything even in outlying areas in, you know, in the Clark County or Yakima or anywhere. So.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a very thorough update, but lots of questions from us.
Going to mention on the, the cooling shelter kind of issue and that too, that we've looked at different options and like last year, this had come up too, because in, and in the past, like the Golden Dale Senior Center has opened, you know, they had volunteers, but they weren't willing to do that again because they said every time they've done that, nobody has come. And we've offered, you know, we definitely would transport people and we even, a number of the Granges have offered, and they said, okay, if you get people, call us, we'll, we'll have volunteers that'll come and open up and we'll run the AC. And we do. But where we've run into actually more is with a number of the seniors, we, they don't want to leave their home, even when it's really horrific. So we've been like, we'll get bags of ice and water and water bottle and trying to help mitigate at home, but a lot of times they're not leaving because they have animals and stuff at home.
Oh, I think, I think the big thing is, is the welfare checks and you have the entire list of all the people who probably need the welfare check because you deal with them. Are we calling those people to make sure they're okay?
We call, well, and part of with our home delivered meals, I mean, that's where we're hitting a lot of those people that are, and we have a process for then, you know, requesting a well check too with the local police or the sheriff's department when we have a concern about a senior. But, I mean, we don't know all the seniors and all the people in need out there. I mean, we, we come across it all the time where people, I didn't know you even existed. I mean, there's about 4,000 seniors in Clickatap County. And yes, we serve a good number of people, but not near that many.
At least 600.
Well, you know, in terms of, and under various different programs, there's more along those lines where we're probably looking at about 1,200 folks overall, but there's, that's still a big gap between. But not all seniors need it because that's, we're talking 60 and older and there's a lot of people that don't need assistance that are that. Correct?
I would agree. Times like this, everybody screams for another warming or cooling shelter, but you can have 47 cooling shelters if there's three people at one of them.
But it is good, you know, to have the options and know, and I think, I think it's just always a challenge too, to get the word out. But certainly if people need transportation to get in and out, that's something we would provide and do provide, so.
Maybe, before you disappear, maybe the board could, if they so choose, delegate you to make a phone call to the radio and advise them of our cooling shelter and that we have transportation service to the cooling shelter.
Oh, for the Goldendale radio station?
Yeah. Would there be any interest in getting the word out?
I'm happy with getting the word out, but I don't want to.
Yeah, no, we can call the radio, call in on the radio and just remind people too that, you know, or if they're concerned about somebody to call our office.
Good relationship at the radio.
Absolutely. Sounds like a great, great PR piece for tomorrow morning.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Mr. Gallagher. Are you busy?
Like I forgot.
There's a quick meeting, so it'll be a quick update.
All true, true of all accounts. Yes, Commissioner Anderson is correct. It was a, we didn't have much on the agenda, so it was a good time to catch up and get a few things out there and move forward. So the finance committee met on July 27th or 22nd at the, and we had on our agenda was the E-signature and that's a carryover from previous ones. The auditors, the update on that was that the auditor's office has been understaffed and doing some other things. So that one hasn't made the cut. So there's, I know Heather's doing some work on that and hoping to get it finished. So we're going to continue to carry that one on to the next, next meeting. The, we did add a thing to the agenda, the ARPA funds, the submission was done. It was the same as it was the last time, so that's been confirmed. So I know that that was a plus. Rob shared that his association has kind of been putting out, I think it's for just numbers, that the unemployment was going up and the interest rates were slowing. I, I don't know the interest rate part of it because I know that they are raising interest rates on the Fed side, but the, the, the unemployment has been going up. So I think the hope was is that, Robin, Commissioner Anderson had a discussion, you know, hopefully there'll be more folks out there for jobs and different things in the county. Jen shared that we're having a budget discussion on Thursday, so she was excited about that. Brenda stated that the audit is starting on August 8th. And I updated the group that we have selected an internal candidate to the accounting, accountant position. And we are hoping to advertise, which at this point in time, thank you, it sounds like we got a verbal to begin advertising for that other position. So that's good. And I also updated on that we're doing some Umpqua Bank transitions for some of the districts and some of the company IDs. So we're merging some pieces together, trying to streamline our Umpqua Bank. The merger, the merger for Columbia and Umpqua continues to get kicked out down the road. So I think we were, I was kind of waiting to kind of see where that all went, but we, we, we're just going to do this. So we're basically, it's, has really nothing to do with the county, the, the internal to the county. It has to do with the districts, a lot of school districts. So we're working on that and trying to get their payrolls and everything uploaded currently right now. And the next meeting would be August 12th. Those are the notes that I have, unless I've forgotten something that you might have remembered. That's pretty much about what I had.
Like I said, it was a short meeting.
It was fairly short, yes. Is there any questions from? Is there any questions from the, Jen's in the room?
I have a question for, for probably you, you or you. We're go, we're, we have an RFP or whatever out. When are we expecting potentially being able to actually have a running program? Anybody have any kind of a date range?
So the, what we have right now is we have selected the firm that's going to help us put the process together of how we do the selection. But the, I mean, and I'm going from memory.
First, we have to look at our processes.
Yeah, what, so that, look at our processes so that we know what's the system. And I think that's one of the things that we're really hopeful is that we're going to actually do some really in-depth looking, because we have all these different ways that we do things. Our hope is that we can consolidate everything or make it a lot simpler, and that will be in the new system. But we don't, I mean, it's always a chance that when we get through the, that Kianta is still the best choice. I can't imagine.
Well, I think it would be maybe Kianta, a different version. But yeah, I would, I would say.
Yeah, Kianta this century.
I, I, I believe that the piece is, is that the contract with Barry Dunn, who's been selected, I believe that that's getting negotiated and.
It's done. I mean, it's ready for.
Perfect, perfect, okay. So there you go.
We were told today.
Okay, perfect.
So it could be a whole year of just him working on that process.
Oh, I don't think it's. I, I think in our thing, it was.
About six months, I think was the number.
They were supposed to be out at the end of six months, once we start, which we're delayed getting.
Yep.
We're two to three months behind what we should have.
Right.
But it was a six-month process, and when we get out the other side, we should know.
Which direction we want to go and.
Go, and then we would select, we would do an RFP for what vendors.
And I would say from there, and experience in talking to other counties, I mean, I've talked to Yakima, Yakima County was 18 months, some are 12. I, I would say it's a solid.
At least a year.
Potentially year of implementation.
That you're going to have.
We're not really up and running until 2024 sometime.
Yeah. I think that's accurate.
Yeah. I mean, it would be nice if it was earlier, but I think that's a realistic number.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you, Jen. All right. Next up, you guys mind if we take a three-minute break?
Love the idea, sir.
Yep. Three minutes.
Recession.
Recession.
So moved.
So moved, yeah, whatever.
Okay, we are going to move into our unfinished business with Public Health Director Erin Quinn on the discussion regarding the interview process for the selection of the Board of Health Appointees and anything else she feels like talking about. Director Quinn, good afternoon.
Okay, so we were going to talk about the Board of Health application. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I cannot hear you all, actually, so just so you know. So we're going to talk about the Board of Health applicants. We had six applicants. Five of them were prior to us advertising for the position. So we had asked for, or advertised for the positions. Five of the people had applied last year, I think, and then the sixth person that actually applied during the period of time that we had been advertising. So the discussion today should really be about you all looking at the applicants. We need to decide who we would like to interview for the position. We are currently looking for a position. We do have a healthcare provider currently on the Board of Health, so it'd be a consumer of health or someone that's a community stakeholder. So I think we potentially had shared, she had shared the names. I know in the past you all had access to the applicants. So just really understanding kind of what your thoughts are in this process and moving forward with that from there.
Any thoughts from my seatmates?
What's a box?
Please, we would love it.
I'm looking for the last email from. It was that. It looks like the 19.
Commissioner Christopher.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I can't hear you at all.
Can you hear me now?
I absolutely can, thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I've been leaning forward all day, but I kind of got fat and lazy there and started leaning back.
No worries.
So I guess my first question to my seatmates is, yes, only one of them can be a healthcare provider. We currently have one on the board that is a healthcare provider. Is it the feeling of this board to keep that person that's currently in place? And if that's the case, then we can remove names off this list of healthcare providers.
Commissioner Christopher.
Yes, ma'am.
So one thing that I would like to ask the board to consider, because that's a great question, we, we could, Paul is interested in staying. One thing we could do is potentially ask him to stay an additional six months. If we ask, if we extend his term six months, we then are replacing a Board of Health member annually, so that it's just like once a year, we replace our Board of Health member based on their term of service, which is two years. So that's an option as well, but.
I'm, I'm fine with doing it that way. I just want this board to make that decision so I can cross names off this list. I'm, I'm a yes for keeping the current one, but I need to hear that from you two.
Yeah. I am just for the, for continuity too. I mean, you're going to have, you're going to have some, you know, the, the deck chairs are going to get moved around here in, you know, a few months anyway. So you're already going to have another with a new commissioner. So I, and I think Paul's fine. He's done, he's done a good job, pretty, pretty low-key as far as, so I think, I would, I would support Erin. I think that's a good idea as far as then you get kind of people on the cycle. So if we're doing that, then we can, we need to have somebody that the other seat can't be a healthcare provider.
Are you in concurrence with that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'm in concurrence with that. You know, the other part of it is, you know, I have boards that I've managed and sat on. You can, you can be one thing, but you can also represent another, because you can be two things at once. You can, I can, on the Fisheries Board, I had somebody that was representing timber, but you know, they, they do timber, but they also do something else over here.
Right.
They could have represented either of them.
Sure.
People that could have represented timber and in the environment. And so it's what we consider that person. And when you do community stakeholder or user of, well, hate to say, but everybody's a user of just what you're representing and what, what side you're looking at in that position. So I just, I wanted to throw that out there because, you know, just because you have a PhD or a doctorate, doesn't necessarily mean you're not a user or a stakeholder.
Right. Good point.
I'm, I'm sorry, you all are, it's really, there's no volume coming through on any of you.
We can hear you fine, and I apologize.
I was the only one leaning forward, sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Christopher. Currently, you're the best person I can hear.
Say it.
I, Commissioner, sorry.
I'm being orgy.
I saw that.
Okay, your eyes are good then, anyway.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
With that, I guess we, we remove Mr. Bowmaster, who's a physician. I would argue that, that Sheri Medina in Centerville, patient care technician, is still eligible. Under the RCW, it says his category consists of persons practicing or employed in the county. She practices in the Dells, that is not in the county. So I, I would say you're looking at Sheri, Pete Leon, and Stephen Glass and Sunday Sutton. The, the concern I have, and I, I, I think I'm fully aware of where the board is going. I don't want to be called out later because I violated an RCW by trying to appoint a specific candidate. I'm trying to be, walk on words here. So in the RCW, things that concern me is this individual may not be, may not be elected officials and may not have a fiduciary obligation to a health facility or other health agency and may not have a material financial interest in the rendering of health services. And I would question, how do you get either Sheri Medina or Sunday Sutton to not have a fiduciary? WAGAP has a fiduciary. WAGAP could, could make money based off a ruling of the Board of Health. I mean, is it, I mean, if that doesn't concern you guys, maybe it shouldn't concern me, but.
Certainly, that's something we could ask the PA for clarification on whether or not that was a conflict of interests or not.
Okay. I had, yeah, and really.
Because, because it's, you know, it says, however, if the Board of Health demonstrates that it attempted to recoup members from all three categories and one is able and was unable to do so, it may select a member from the same category. But I think we have viable candidates that we need to make sure that we're not violating the same category. Other than that, that's kind of all I wanted to bring to your attention, and I'm open to discussion on anybody you want to bring forward.
So are you saying that, you know, that fiduciary, that a clinical nutritionist has a.
Potentially, anybody that works in the healthcare field might.
That's kind of the way, the way you read it.
That's, that's the way it's worded.
But I think a fiduciary responsibility is I'm actually a decision maker. Like, does any county employee have a fiduciary responsibility? They don't, we, we do. A director, possibly. A worker, not really, it's a, it's their job.
Fiduciary obligation to a health facility or other health agency.
Obligation.
And what's the, the next part, though?
May not have a maternal.
Material.
A material financial interest in the rendering of health services.
So a financial interest in the rendering of a health service. So is a nutritionist fall into that?
It depends on if we, this county passes forward dollars to that organization, I wouldn't say they, they do. That's my worry about WAGAP.
So my, my interpretation would be whether or not they're, they're gaining, there's fiscal gain to them having a position on the Board of Health. Like, would they gain from us? So on the Board of Health, right, you would potentially, actually, that's not true. Only the commissioners can approve fee schedules. So even the, even the Board of Health members aren't allowed to vote for the fee schedule. So if there was an interest in which they would benefit from this fee schedule, which I don't believe there is, that would be a fiduciary interest. However, I would also defer that to the prosecuting attorney's opinion to determine whether that's true or not.
Okay. No, that, that's, you're, you're, you're hitting my nails right on the head. I, I just know everything we do is heavily scrutinized.
Yeah.
And everybody's going to call foul with everything we do. So I want to make sure we at least looked and did our due diligence, chose your candidate, and then consult the prosecutor for his legal opinion on whether that candidate fits into those categories. That's how I would recommend it. So, no, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so do we want to just send that over to the prosecuting attorney? Or do we want to pick the top three we'd like to interview, no matter what?
I would also say that if, if you personally don't feel like picking someone, I, I would hope that this board would respect that and not call them in to waste their time. If this board really wants one person, then I would call one person. If this board thinks it could be between two and really could be between two, then call two. But if, if the board is looking in one direction, then don't waste everybody else's time in calling that one person, and then let's interview him and move forward.
With that said, is there, do you have something in mind? Is there multiple you'd like to interview?
Do I have something in mind? I don't have anything in mind.
You always have something in mind.
I really don't. I mean, I, I don't want to interview six people, five.
I, I've, well, let's put it this way, I've made multiple motions to appoint. So bringing forward those names again at this point, I don't feel would be pertinent. There's a name on the list that, that has connections, not connections, but recruited, you might say, that the, the health director knows them. I'm not going to, if, if that's the decision of the board, I'm not going to make waves.
Can I, can I interject? Thank you. So, thank you, Commissioner Christopher. So just for your own situational awareness, when we recruited for this position, right, because there was an obligation per the RCW to advertise, ask for, to ask for applicants, we only did get the one applicant that applied, and that is Sunday Sutton. She works for WAGAP and actually has a pretty impressive relationship with behavioral health over the last 20 years in Clickatuck County. And frankly, where we're going with behavioral health, I think that she would be a really strong candidate. And we've had lots, a couple of conversations. I think she, she would be a good fit. I'm not familiar with the other applicants. They applied. I'm not sure, Lee might be able to give some insight into when the last applicant occurred or applied, but I, my understanding is they've been at least six months out. If you want to interview multiple folks on the list, if there was someone you were interested in, I think at this point, we would have to actually call them and see if they were still interested in potentially even being any candidate.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'll make this easy. I will put forward a name on this one, and I will put forward a name on the library board on the next one, and then you guys can choose or decide. I, I would recommend that we only interview Sunday Sutton for this position.
Is this contingent upon the prosecuting attorney saying that they fit the.
Correct.
That they could qualify?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. If they're, I wouldn't have thought of the fiduciary conflict, but I appreciate that you're raising that.
Just want to make sure nobody's coming after us later.
Yeah, I totally respect your thoughts in making sure we're covered. I've heard, I guess, is that a motion? Or do you just want it to be this is who we're going to consensus?
However you want it.
I think we're fine, if, we're just calling for interviews.
Yeah.
We're not offering the position, we're, we're just doing the interviews, so I don't think you need a motion.
So I think that's consensus. We will interview Sunday Sutton, and let's hope we all like the person. Intention upon.
Do you think it would be of us to ask the prosecutor if he wanted to sit in because he might have a question with the RCWs to make sure that we're not.
Going to ask.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
That's all I have for this.
Okay. All right. I think that's, and Director Quinn, you'll be, you'll get in touch with Ms. Sutton and try to.
I will, yes. And then I'll work with Lee to work out a time. It does have to be a public interview. I'd ask for a PA opinion about that, and so the board will have to do that. And then if you, and then if I could have a couple more minutes of your time, I have some other compelling issues to discuss as well.
Please do.
If we, before we leave this specific, have you had, have you had any contact as far as the sixth seat from the.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry. The, have you had any contact for the sixth seat as far as from tribal? Have we heard?
I have not, and then, and I would ask Lee that as well, because I think she, she's the one that actually sent the letter. I haven't heard anything, which I assume that Lee hasn't heard anything either.
She says no.
She's not letting me know.
Thank you.
And I don't think that's different from any other county, the state. I don't think any other county has heard either. It's my impression.
Okay, continue on.
So I did, I just wanted to let you know, I don't know if you'd spoken with the PA already, that I did pull the Skamania County in our local agreement. Skamania County had concerns about their in a local agreement for the providing mental health services. They asked that we make some amendments to it. My understanding is that both PAs for Skamania County and Clickatuck County have. My understanding is that both P A's for Skamania County and Clickatet County have spoken and made the arrangements. So I believe Skamania County is still going to sign their amended agreement today. And then I will forward that on to, for you all to sign next week with, with the amendments in it. Do you have questions about that?
No, no. We'll look forward to it next Tuesday.
We'll all be there to discuss it next Tuesday as well. And just so, just for your own situational awareness, like, you know, we worked out. We had some D C Rs. I, I sent out kind of a recruitment email, like, this is what we need, the designated crisis responders. This is what we're looking for. This is what we would like. I got a lot of pushback about what the reimbursement rates were. No one was happy with what we were offering. They were not willing to sign on. I did work with Leah this morning. We worked out a kind of a middle ground approach. So we'll be forwarding that on. Hopefully, we can get a little bit more interest and a little bit more buy-in. Because we had a lot of people express interest, but didn't feel like the reimbursement was appropriate for their education experience. Again, just, just so you know, we're looking at, you know, moving forward, if, if behavioral is something you want to wrap under the county, under the county umbrella, we're looking at at least $62,000 a month. That's, I mean, we're, you're, and that's bare bones, that's minimum. So like budget wise, you're going to be minimum $1 million per year. We get a lot of money from Beacon. There's a lot of grant opportunities, but I need you all to be very aware of what kind of, like, what the cost to the county actually is, just, just so you know.
And by bare bones, are you talking bare bones D C R services only or bare bones triage and D C R services?
That does include the Lifeline triage services, so, but that's still, that's very bare bones, like, very, to just kind of, just from a fiscal standpoint, we're going into budget. I just, I just need everyone to be aware and understand.
Okay. Thank you. We'll talk more on the side.
Yes. I did have a nurse resign this week, so I'd like permission to advertise for that. Typically, it's taken one to two months for us to, to be able to fill that position. So with your permission, I'd like to advertise that.
Good for all you.
Yes.
Yes, all the way across the board.
Yeah. Our health officer resigned yesterday, so Dr. Person will be leaving us in the next eight weeks. That is a huge, that is a huge hit. I can't, I can't even. So I will be pursuing advertising that as well. She is a, I believe she is an employee of the Board of Health, not the Board of Commissioners, but Board of Health. So we will be looking to replace her position. So if you have questions about that, it's not a good process, but here we are.
Okay.
I am the cloud of doom today. I have nothing better to say. And on that note, it gets better. We have our first suspect case of monkeypox.
That's why Dr. Person was like, I'm, I'm done.
In our county or in our state?
In our county. There's over 80 in the state right now. So we've had the first suspect case in the county. Our communicable disease nurse, who is the one that resigned, is working through, it's been a rough day, is working through. They will get the antivirals, like, I believe they're working through getting those. So those have to get delivered from King County. They're, they're the holder in the state of, of the medications right now. So we're working through getting that taken care of. I did, I specifically did not ask for demographics because it's, when you have low case counts, it's, it's not good for me to be able to say, like, who it is, where they are, that sort of thing. But it is in Clickatet County. It was someone that was a higher risk individual, the, the, a male. It met the, it met the case criteria that we're seeing across the rest of the state. So male, 19 to 49, high risk behaviors. So we're working on getting that taken care of. And then, anyway, questions, questions about monkeypox?
You got anything better than this?
Do, do, did you hold back something?
I do. I do.
Do you, do you, did you ever find out whether that Lyme case was on this side of the county or the other side of the county?
I'm sorry, I, I absolutely did not, but I will.
You have far better things to do, like monkeypox.
I will find out.
Lyme is so 1980.
No, I, I will find out, Commissioner Christopher, and get back to you. But I mean, just, just because we're on the cloud of doom, we are also, we are also working with a foreign national for directly observed therapy for T B treatment as well. So just, you know, we got all of it.
Okay.
Okay, what, what's the, what's the best one? What else you got?
That's, no, that's it. That's.
Oh, I thought you said TB was the high, that was the good news.
Yeah, the TB is the easy stuff. Like, we've been there, done that. We get that one. But just, I mean, you should know that that's the thing we're working on. Otherwise, unless you have questions about, you know, any of those responses, recruiting any, the health officer or another nurse or monkeypox or behavioral health, I got all the answers, maybe.
No, I was going to make a joke to make light of the situation a little bit, but I decided I'll, I'll hold that.
Thank you.
It's because you can, doesn't mean you should.
There is a first for everything. Like monkeypox. Okay. Thank you, Director Quinn. Have a safe trip home. Try not to catch monkeypox or T B or Lyme disease or, what was the other one? I said T B. No, you pulled that one out. All right, is there anything else you need from us? For, or the agreement with Skamania County and that Lifeline group? Is Lifeline going to be triaging for us during that time or is it all going to be on Skamania County?
So I'm meeting with them tomorrow. They have agreed to triage. So what that looks like is they would do the, it would be telehealth. And so they, they would likely engage in scenarios where it wasn't, it wasn't obvious that the person needed designated crisis responder or not. So they would cut, ensure that the appropriate resources are deployed. They also have an inpatient unit in Vancouver that typically has beds. So they're a good resource to connect with because potentially we could get people from here into the Vancouver area with, into a bed, which is a huge win for us. And, and actually, to that note, there is one other thing I'm working on and I, I keep forgetting to mention. The county does need to have a contract with a, and I'm looking into it. I have someone that's available and I think I'm meeting with them later this week. Transportation is the big issue for getting people into a bed. And so to be able to have a contract with a, a transport, people's families maybe don't want to take them or they're not appropriate for Mad Adams Transportation to do through the Medicaid exchange. So, so we're looking at establishing that kind of service as well so that we can get people from their crisis scenario into, into a bed.
Good job. Keep up the good work.
All right, well, let me know if you have other questions.
Thank you, Director Quinn. I don't think, we'll get in touch.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Have a good day. Consent agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda with, consent agenda with seven items pulling item number four.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion in a second to, for the consent agenda with seven items pulling number four. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pay, pay estimate number 26 to Kirby Nagelhaus Construction Company in the amount of $46,037.88, which excludes retainage in the amount of $2,043.26 and includes sales tax in the amount of $3,452.84 for a total payment amount of $47,447.46 for the county services building contract number C 03120.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion in a second to pay, pay estimate number 26 to Kirby Nagelhaus Construction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I would make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of $983,263.53 and payroll benefit warrants in the amount of $1,047,360. Let me start over. Payroll benefit warrants in the amount of $1,047,367.40 for the date ending July 25th, 2022.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion in a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, prosecuting attorney's off. We've got board pending. Fort Vancouver Regional Library Trust Boyd Board Appointment.
Okay, on that one, we have three applicants. The first applicant, which is my nomination for this board, applied on June 10th. The second applicant applied on June 28th. Third applicant applied on July 7th. The first applicant I know is involved in the library board, even though they did not sit on the library board. With that, they are my recommendation and if you need more, I'll give it to you.
Paul, you're thinking, sure, give us more.
Yeah, give me more.
The, one of the reasons why I so chose this, not only were they first, which tells me they actually care and they didn't have to be hunted down and, and drug into a volunteer position like other potential applicants. One of these people is very new to our county. And the other one has already served on the library board before. And I believe that multiple people can do the job. So I would recommend a new person versus somebody that's already been on the board. This person has also called me on multiple occasions and asked me if they thought that she needed to come in and talk to you guys ahead of time. And I told her, no, I don't think it's needed, but which tells me they're passionate. We're all just reading for all you people on Zoom.
Yeah, sorry.
So you're the one for June 10th? Do you know, did any of these people, part of that big library blow up over the book?
Right, that's what I'm kind of curious about.
The first applicant is part of that. The third applicant, I believe, was the exact opposite. This one was the librarian reaching out for a candidate. Because there was two sides of the library argument. The citizen and the librarian. The citizen is here and the librarian has their candidate, which was the previous.
So the current librarian is in support of the third applicant?
That's the way I understand it. And if you have issues, I'm sure that we can do interviews for that as well.
Here's my, I, I don't really have a, you know, based on their applications. I mean, there's not a ton of information in their applications. The concern part that I want, the, the part that I have concerns over is I don't really know and I don't want this, I don't want chaos and I don't want this to just be another, like, we're opening another campaign in another, you know, to fight about, about the culture wars going on.
And I've mentioned to this person that, that I had the same concerns and I've been assured that, oh, no, 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 that's not what this is about. And I've told them that the, you know, appointments can be unappointed at any given time. And they're like, you won't have to because there, there's no issue. So I, I would hate for the reporting of a paper, you know how factual we know those are, to publicly put it, somebody in a gray area that, in, 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 hold them from getting a spot because of what was published on the paper. So that's my argument. If, if you, you know, if you don't see it and you want to interview these said people, fine with it. But I, I look at anybody we appoint, whether it's to the board of health or anything else, that if they don't represent this county, they can, they can be polled. And I would vote in favor of polling them. The crazy thing is this one seems to be harder than the board of health appointment a minute ago.
Right, but the other counties usually agree to each.
It's, it's mutual back and forth.
And what you're saying, though, is that the person who's been calling was very interested because of the whole book thing and that's what got them interested.
No, they were interested before that.
Was that before the book thing?
I think the problem with the book thing was even the Fort Vancouver Regional Library ended up saying, whoops, yep, our bad. That book should not have been on an end display and it should not have been in the children's section. I think the argument is how it was handled. And I don't believe what that comes down to the reporting part.
Right, what you read in the newspaper is never, not always the way it feels for both sides.
So do I think there was potentially some improper handling on both sides? Absolutely. Have I done things that, you know, probably hindsight, yeah, have we all? Probably. Are we going to blackball somebody that's really interested in the library? That serves a specific demographic of our community? And that is someone that, with small children. Someone that is a stay home mother, the other two are, you know, kids long gone. I'm willing to give it a chance.
Okay.
What do you think?
I can, I can go along with that, with, it's like, I, I mean, I don't care where anybody is on anything. I don't want people with agendas that are getting themselves placed on boards for an agenda. And I, and I, and again, I don't know, I, I don't want to disrespect this individual, or honestly, any of the three. Because it, it's just as likely.
The other two are the same.
Exactly. So it's just, we are seeing that more and more where, you know, but I do, I'm, I'm willing to, let's, let's try it out and see. I can, I can go along with that and then if it's, um, you know, give people a chance. And I think we do need all those voices. Even, even ones maybe some folks don't agree with, that's okay.
As long as they can do it.
As long as they, right.
Do it in a calm.
Politely, calmly, and it's because we do, because that, that's obviously, there is that, that voice is out in the community, that, that voice needs to be listened to.
Right.
It should get its day, but as long as it does-
Make sure they understand, if you're not being a team player, then, then you will-
You don't get to just take your role and go home.
No.
I'm fine with it as well, okay.
No, that's, if that's the, do you need a motion for that one? Okay.
Incurrence.
Yep, yeah, and it's all actually a paper.
I'll reach out and make sure they're fully aware of the.
Expectations.
Expectations.
Okay. Next up, we have the landfill gas improvement fund request on the behalf of the Goldendale wastewater treatment plant improvement projects.
Um, you might not be aware of this one, the $250,000 that, of '09, the Casey Peta,
Right.
Did. It's kind of what the landfill gas fund is for. Um, so my thinking was not an additional $250,000. Let's put that project on the landfill gas for the chairman and PUD, who's also gonna have their want.
Right.
Uh, the county doesn't ever have a want, well, now we do. Um, here's our one. Uh, and then.
Technically, it's not ours, it's the city's.
Well, it's not a PUD want. All the other ones are PUD wants. Um, and then if approved, um, that 250, there was earmarked from '09, goes back in '09 to use on a different economic development project. Uh, this can be used on water and wastewater, which is what that, you know, landfill gas fund is for.
So personally, I, I think that the landfill gas improvement project money more closely resembles that wastewater treatment plant in the first place versus $09.
Right.
Personally, that's how I feel, uh, because it's, it's more of a maintenance 20-year upgrade thing versus, you know, creating new economic development. How do you feel?
Yeah, I said, I think, you know, we, we looked at it with '09 because they came in and made the request.
And I was unaware of the landfill gas and how it operated at the time, so.
Yeah, so it's like-
Once I saw that maybe we pulled it from the wrong place and trying to fix something and potentially be able to reuse that 250 in economic development somewhere.
So what, what happens if we go to tonight's meeting, we say, yeah, we're gonna push this one towards wastewater, or towards natural gas and I go over there and we get into a TIF and they want their projects and not this project?
It's, it's up to the vote of the board, how you vote on that.
You have to be unanimous.
Yeah.
You can each veto each other's stuff, so it's mutual assured destruction.
Neither one of you can get your projects, that's up to the chairman and the chairman. As I said, I wouldn't even necessarily bring it up to Casey Peta unless you wanted to, I've just, as an advisement. Um, I brought it up to the city as an advisement and they're like, okay, we don't care where we get our 250,000, problem.
How did we get our match?
But, um, I don't want to take it away and then assure it's there, but again, it's like he said, you know, it's gotta be unanimous between the two of you for their projects and our projects, which I'm sure-
No, I think it, I think it fits and I, and it would, I would be good if I had a list of all the landfill gas projects that have been done. Do we have a list?
There is a list.
Okay, before that meeting. And then that'll help me in the discussions, but I agree, it's, it definitely fits the landfill gas more so than .09.
Yep.
Okay. We can all agree that's, uh, the right way to go and we won't make any changes. Go after.
Yep.
Okay. Um, prosecuting attorneys, it's still not coming. I've got a meeting coming up here shortly.
Mr. Robb, have executive, you mentioned this morning, you were gonna do executive this morning. No prosecutor?
We'll do it later.
Yep. Okay. Um, before we adjourn, I'd like to, uh, let the public know that the county commissioners will be attending the Clickitack County Public Economic Development Authority Board Meeting, virtually or in person. The meeting will be held in the Mount Adams Meeting Room in the County Services Building at 115 West Court, room 100, Goldendale, Washington. And that is tonight. Uh, it begins at 6 o'clock. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we adjourn the regular meeting, uh, until 10 o'clock on Thursday, July 28th for scheduled workshops.
I would second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you all who stayed with us, all 13 that were left, uh, have a great day and stay cool and stay safe.
13, I must have been boring them to death with my thoughts.